Please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome our guests this evening and those watching on cable. First order of business is to sign the town election warrant. Mr. O'Leary, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the May 2015 town election warrant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. John?
Yes.
I think he has to witness you.
Talk about it.
Oh, he has to witness the signing?
Yes, a free act indeed.
What?
You haven't been coerced in any way to do this, right?
No.
No.
Does he have to witness our vote?
No, I think just his signature. Chairman, we're all set. We just voted to approve the...
To sign the warrant. It's my free act of deed.
Mr. O'Leary is signing it.
All right. Mr. Yule.
There you go.
Thank you.
Bring it back to Mr. O'Leary.
Yep.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we have the minutes of April 6th regular session. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 6th, 2015 regular session minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We have the regular session minutes for October 7th. Mr. O'Leary, when you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 7th, 2015 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All in favor, one abstention? And that'll hold true for the executive session, too, just in advance. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 7th, 2015 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye.
Mr. Frisco. We have the executive session of April 16th. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 16th, 2015 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Well, we're waiting for 6:45. Guess we could do the bowling alley.
Unless something has changed from late this afternoon, we did not receive the license renewal application from Candlewood in time to act on it, so we'll again encourage them to submit for renewal on May 4th.
I'll vote to vote the North Reading Library staff contract.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the integrated agreement between the Town of North Reading and the North Reading Library Staff Association Local 4928, MLSA AFT Massachusetts AFL-CIO, for the period ending June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. I just want to make a comment that this is not a new contract, this is the current contract, and all that we've done is taken the contract plus the, what do we call it?
Memorandum of Agreement.
Memorandum of Agreement and integrated into the contract. Thank you, Steve. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And we want to vote to accept the gift from Firestone. Do we expect anybody here?
I'm not expecting anyone, no.
Okay.
And I would just note that the motion reads $500, but we were pleasantly surprised when it was $1,000.
So, Mr. O'Leary, when you read it, will you correct the motion?
Not for me.
When you find it?
Yes, I do. I thought it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the gift of $1,000 from Firestone for the Community Impact Team gift account.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Any comment?
Certainly appreciate it. I wasn't able to make the ribbon cutting, but I wish...
I did attend and have very nice ceremony. They had little handouts for those people that attended. Looks like, you know, it's very professional operation, very nice clean area, their main showroom. And, you know, with respect to the gift of $1,000 to the Community Impact Team, I said a few words, and I said that in addition to thanking them, that that money would be, you know, applied to the general charges of the Community Impact Team, just focus on opiate abuse and everything related to the well-being of our community, from our youth right up to our seniors. So, again, we thank them.
Yes, absolutely. That's great.
Again, I appreciate the commitment they've made, the investment they've made. The new facility certainly enhances Route 28 with a new facility out there, and wish them much success.
Any other comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
We just need to sign this agreement.
We don't have time to discuss the vehicle use policy for first reading.
We could start the discussion if the board members would like.
Okay.
I'm happy to go through the town administrator's report if you'd like as well, if that might fit in.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to note for tonight's administrator's report. The first is as a follow-up to the town's nomination for the Mass Municipal Association's annual awards, while the town was not selected, the MMA has recently highlighted the town's Community Impact Team through its website in a news article that I included in my report. Again, I think that the article speaks to perhaps the uniqueness of the CIT, particularly in a smaller community, trying to address through the cooperation of town departments, social issues that might otherwise fall between the gaps of departments, or that might cut across multiple departments. So, again, I felt since my first day here that it was fairly unique, and it seems the MMA, while not providing an award, feels similarly. The second is a copy of the Minute Militia's invitation to the Memorial Day Parade and Services. The activities will commence at 10 o'clock a.m. on Memorial Day, Monday, May 25th. Mr. Chairman, I know, I believe the chairman normally makes comments, so I'll leave that to you to address with regard to the event at a later point in time. But just wanted to note that it is in the board's correspondence for tonight's meeting as well.
Okay.
Third was a copy of a request I received and approved for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to conduct field assessments at the North Parish Park. The state's goal is to document the ecological integrity of forested wetlands in order to assess wetland health throughout Massachusetts. It's relatively non-invasive, as you may have seen. I just wanted to make that note in case anybody in the public notices some activity at that location in the coming weeks. And then finally, just for the board's information, I included a copy of the town's 2015 annual stormwater report to the state with regard to our stormwater activities. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Don, are you going to use the projector?
Yeah.
Liz is probably bringing it with her, right? Liz, is Liz bringing it, or is it, did you?
I think it's loaded on there, but she has some copies of the presentation.
Right. Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I could note or provide for the board is an update on this morning's Northern Middlesex Gas Pipeline, excuse me, Northern Massachusetts.
Northeast Municipal Pipeline Coalition.
Thank you, Slime. Yes.
I practiced it a bunch of times.
So, just a couple of notes. Again, North Reading, for the second, or was it third time, was the host for the regular meeting here in the town hall. Couple of things to note from the discussion was first that although the main route has been proposed to change, to largely go through southwest and south-central New Hampshire as opposed to the central part of Massachusetts, this group does remain active and engaged with regard to the issue. I think the group recognizes that there are a number of communities that are impacted by the existence of the lateral line from Drakeet to Linfield, North Reading being one of them, as well as now communities to our south and east who are impacted by a lateral line that will go from Linfield, I believe, to Beverly, largely traversing Peabody and Danvers, if I'm not mistaken. So, is it good to see representation from those communities here? Again, just the high points from the presentation was first that the group does remain active despite the proposed route change, and we continue to actively participate in the meetings. Secondly, that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is in the process of scheduling scoping sessions, which the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments reports would be, if not later in May, than in June. The Pipeline Coalition has prepared a list of studies and/or analysis that it wishes to request be addressed through those scoping sessions, and will be submitting those requests to FERC. And finally, that they're, we are right now targeting to have Kinder Morgan present at the May 4th Selectments Meeting, which would be one week from tonight. I just want to confirm attendance from legislative representation that evening, but Kinder Morgan, I know, will be available to attend.
So, Kinder Morgan will be here?
Yes, yes. They've expressed a desire to be, and their availability to be here on Monday, May 4th.
And you've extended those invitations to our state legislators?
Those are the ones that I need to confirm. I'm not sure that we'll get the federal representation. We may get staff from the office, obviously, but that's just one last thing that I want to confirm with regard to Monday.
What about our local legislators?
I've not confirmed their availability. One of the other options was for tonight, but I was aware that the House Budget Session is ongoing this week, and I figured that it would not be a good night for Representative Jones, so we did not broach that that evening.
Mr. Frisco.
So, what's the goal of that meeting?
For Kinder Morgan to respond to the letter that the board authorized the chairman to send back in early March. There are written responses, there's a written response that they provided, which has been put in the Dropbox folder from, I think, April 15th, if I'm not mistaken. But again, the board had asked that they respond, and they've expressed a willingness to attend and answer questions.
Will it be a representative from FERC?
No, I don't expect that.
Mr. Yule. At the, under the old new business, because I see the clock is ticking there, I have some additional information that I could pass on to the board.
Wait, do it later.
Yeah, because it'll take up too much time. I just want to be sure that, you know, our federal legislators are, my desire, and I think our desire, is to find out what their position is on this particular proposal, and again, if they can't be here personally, to send a representative with their position on it, and what they're intending on doing to assist us with FERC, or anybody else, or if they're in favor of it. But I think it's important that they relay to us, selected officials, what their position is on the proposal. So, if you could ensure that that's what we're looking for from them for the May 4th meeting, whether it be by staff person or correspondence, it would be appreciated and enlightening.
Understood. Thank you.
Who were you waiting on, Liz?
Can you buzz?
If you're setting up the bar, though, I thought maybe, you know, Liz, you're setting up the bar.
Are you starting this up?
Pardon?
Are you starting this up?
Yeah. Whenever you're ready, I'm ready. You're waiting for Jeff?
Jeff's coming right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go to the floor.
Tonight, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee is making its annual presentation of its recommendations for the capital budget. I'd like to thank my fellow committee members, Mr. Messari, Mr. Fodi, and Ms. Rourke, Abby Trollope, Mike Gilberto, Mike Conley, and Janine Embriano. So, we've got a group of eight people that have been working on this for several months, and I'd like to present the results of it. We kept the same approach as we've had in the past couple of years, and that's to get requests from all of the departments of the items that they wanted funded in the fiscal 16, 17, and 18, and we paid most attention to the current year, the fiscal 16, of course. We met with department heads, we met with consultants that they brought along if they felt they needed some support in some of the projects because they were a little more involved than they were comfortable in presenting themselves. We also did some field trips to take a look at equipment and locations that were in need of some capital improvement. We received a total, for me, of 32 requests totaling just under $4 million from the general government and the schools. Can we slide this up a little? And from the Hillview, excuse me, the Water Enterprise, about a little over $3.5 million in items. So, that nearly $7.5 or over $7.5 million of requests, obviously, were more than we could afford to fund this year. So, we spent a fair amount of time evaluating each of the requests and asking questions of the department heads that were making those requests. We ended up recommending, and you'll see in a later slide here, 16 requests from the general government and schools totaling just over $1.4 million. The Water Enterprise, we are recommending $1,850,000. Most of that being covered by bonding, 10-year bonding, the balance of $82,500 will be taken from cash reserves in the Water Enterprise. The largest item in the Water Enterprise is a request for $1.7 million for new meters, water meters. It's water meters and software so that we can automatically read all of the meters at town hall, can bill more timely, if we bill quarterly, if we chose to bill monthly, we could do that. There's been no decision made on that. That's an operational issue. But it brings our meters up to a good standard. One of the things that impressed the committee on this item, although it's a very big, big number, is that we're losing about 6% of the water revenue because of old meters, and many of our meters are over 15 years old. The cost that we're, the revenue that we're losing is over $200,000 a year. Coincidentally, a 10-year bonding on this is slightly under that amount. So, over 10 years, these meters will pay for themselves in the savings on lost revenue from the Water Department. So, that's a good thing, and it gets us in a position to deal with if we are going to move at some point in time to MWRA or some other water source, it has us with up-to-date equipment. But we'll go ahead to the details of this a little bit more as we go on. The general government and schools, the $1,415,000 that we're recommending for approval is being funded from a number of sources. $134,000 from free cash, $125,000 budget appropriation that will be made at June Town Meeting, $724,678 of bonding for a period of ranging from five to 15 years, a transfer from the ambulance reserve fund of $292,000 to purchase the ambulance, which will be done sometime in about a year. And we found, or the town finance director found some $142,000 of funds that had previously been bonded for projects and not spent, so we're able to apply them to projects that were requested this year that had like terms as the original bonding organization. So, we were able to fill in with that amount. So, the total cash outlay is about $160,000, about $725,000 of bonding and the transfer from the ambulance reserve, particularly the ambulance. When we put this plan together a couple of years ago, and we've refined it since then, the goal was to establish a reliable source of funding so that we could have a capital program that was dependable, we could look out over several years, anticipate our needs, and be relatively confident that we would have the funding for that. And the plan, as it goes forward after this year's, is working in that same way. The, one of the underlying goals was to not exceed our current debt service, the principal and interest on the non-exempt debt at $1.1 million. So, the whole idea of how much we're going to recommend for acquisition, how long it's bonded, and what the sources of the funding will be, keep in mind that, you know, we need to hold our debt service at its current level. There were three commitments that the town made a year ago and needs to reaffirm as this project goes forward, the program goes forward, rather. And that is that we have an annual allocation. Can you slide down one little bit on that list? We have an annual allocation from the operating budget. This year, it's $125,000. We want to grow that to $250,000 by 2021. That point, I think, it will be pretty stable, adding $25,000 a year to the annual appropriation. Also, to dedicate $150,000 of free cash at June Town Meeting every year, and to dedicate another $200,000 of free cash at the October Town Meeting. Having these in place and understanding that they're, they will, in all likelihood, be realized, allows us to put together a capital program that can be self-sustaining. The other goal is to get to the point where we're not bonding five-year items. We're bonding about $142,000 this year. As we look out to 2021, that number in our projections is down to about $50,000. We feel that items of that short duration ought to be paid, though. We ought to be building the funds that we can, we can take care of those without incurring long-term debt, and save the long-term debt for some more major projects. Our work after tonight in this recommendation, and then the board's, hopefully, their approval of it, and town meeting approval of it, our work then will go on. We will have to go back and revisit those fiscal 16 requests that we were unable to fund. As I mentioned, it was for the general government and schools, it was about $4 million worth of requests. We'll look at those and keep those at the top of the list for next year. We'll also start to work on the 16, excuse me, the 17 and 18 requests to try to get some feeling as to the priority of those items before we go into next year's evaluation of the requests. And when we do that, we'll add another year onto it, ask the department heads to refresh their requests for fiscal 17, some things may have gotten more important or less important, and we'll look at them at that point in time. So, that is the overview. I'd like to go into just, without everybody's eyes glossing over, to go into a few of the schedules that are in here, and I'm sure nobody can read that. If you go back to the rank achievement, this is the first one. This simply is the number I told you, the $1,418,000 at the top of this. These are the items that we are recommending for approval. These were the items that were in the requests that we deemed were not as highly ranked as the others. As I mentioned earlier, I think I did, anyway, each of the eight members of the committee, after we had reviewed this and talked to department heads and talked among ourselves, each of us then individually went and ranked each of the requests, and... ourselves, each of us then individually went and ranked each of the requests, and, and after that ranking was done, we put them in, in order of the, the highest to lowest priority. Um, and you can see, I think you may be able to see, in the, the far right-hand column, those are the aggregate rankings from the, the group of the, the eight of us. So the, the top item on there, which got out of, out of a five, a four point eight eight, uh, points, was the computer equipment replacement plan for the town. This is the annual plan, the thirty-five thousand dollars of just bringing, keeping our computers up to date by replacing those that are, that are getting, uh, getting old and, uh, bringing, bringing on some new ones. The second item on there is the town road program, the hundred thousand dollars. This is the supplement to chapter ninety money for, for roads, and also to provide some funding for non-accepted roads that are not part of chapter ninety, that won't be , uh, funded by, by the state. The third item is a, to replace a two thousand and one three-quarter pickup truck that's used in the cemetery and other, other grounds in the town. Uh, a vehicle with, I think, over a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. DPW works these things until they, they don't work anymore, and it's, it, it, it makes good sense to replace them before they, they start costing us a lot of money in repairs or are not dependable. The, uh, the fourth item is a two-year project for the, the school department, requesting the school department to do some paving at the hood school. This was one of the, the areas where we did a field visit to take a look at the condition of the playground, the parking area, the walkways around, around the hood school, and, uh, they're, they're, they're in pretty bad shape and need to have some, uh, some work done on them. We're, we've, we're recommending doing half of it this year, which is what the, the request was from the, the school department, and it will be back on next year's list for the second half. That's a, a request of fifty thousand dollars, excuse me, for, yes, of fifty thousand dollars. The fire station improvements, uh, we had a presentation made by, uh, uh, the chief and by, uh, Selectman Frisco to, to the committee on the condition of the, the fire station, and frankly, there is, there is a lot that needs to be done there. The most immediate issue was the flooring on the offices, the hallways, and, and, and on the first floor, um, and, uh, we're recommending that a, a, a fund of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars be spent to bring those up to, um, a, a much more acceptable level, recognizing that there's probably more work that needs to be done there, but this need, this needs to be done now. Uh, the next item is a-
Excuse me, Don?
I'm sorry, yes.
And there's also a sum of money, it's either thirty-five or forty thousand dollars that was approved by the Finance Committee for short-term improvements this fiscal year that will be done by June thirtieth as well-
Yes.
-to augment that amount of funding. I think that was for the-
So it's probably seventy or eighty thousand dollars in total.
Total, that's correct.
This, this was, this capital, that was, was a reserve fund transfer to-
Right.
-to do some oth- other items that needed to get done there. I think security camera was one of them, and the field-
The leaking gable roof, ceiling tiles, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Frisco? So the kitchen won't be done?
Not this year.
Either one of those, okay, nothing?
Yeah, okay. Uh, special education van, um, this is a, a, a program proposed by the school department to, um, replace their, their vans, one a year over the next three years. Um, the, the van being, being replaced right now is a two thousand and seven with, I think, a hundred and twelve thousand miles on it. Uh, they, these are used for transporting, uh, students, uh, special education students. Uh, we've got a fleet of three of them, uh, they need to be working, uh, and, uh, this one's getting kind of old. Uh, it's, we're not going to get rid of it, it's going to be moved down to the, the food service, um, uh, group in the school department, and they will get rid of their two thousand whatever it is that is just about on its last legs, and they will use this two thousand and seven. They use that for bringing, uh, food through, uh, the various schools. So this, this is a, a plan looking forward over, over several years of keeping vehicles in service and without spending, uh, an extraordinary amount of, um, of maintenance costs to, to, to make sure that they're, they're working. Uh, the next item, uh, the summit, the, uh, is a replacement, um, nineteen, uh, a nineteen ninety-five, a nineteen ninety-nine, uh, five-ton dump trucks, big dump trucks that are quite old, uh, to, uh, dispose of them, we're actually going to trade them, get, get a few dollars in the trade, and replace them with one truck. So the fleet's being cut by, by one, but it will be, uh, fully serviced, it will plow and sand it, I think, as well, is that right? Yes.
Just a quick question on this one?
Mr. Frisco?
Yes.
So the description doesn't say anything about the cemetery, so is it supposed to be the road programs?
It's a-
Or is it really supposed to be cemetery?
It says cemetery, but I think it's more road programs, anything?
Well, it's signed to the cemetery, it's going to change, it's going to change.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just words assigned. Stormwater drain system, this is to, to, um, review all of the, 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 the drains and make repairs where necessary. The sewer, FEIR, which is the, uh, the final environmental impact, uh, report, um, we've done a, a preliminary, um, impact report, and now we've got to bring it up to date and, uh, to, uh, put us in position to evaluate where we go with, with stormwater. Town buildings, uh, there are a couple of offices in the town buildings that are just not functional, uh, and, um, we, again, that was another one of our field trips, took a look at them and decided that, uh, they were, uh, in need of some, some recommendations for capital funding, and, uh, that's why that's in the project. The GIS system, um, this has been on the, the request for a couple of years, um, the committees, um, uh, I think in the past couple of years, I know, it has been supportive of doing this, but, uh, we really didn't have a, a mechanism for monitoring it and managing the GIS system. That will be in place this year, and therefore we're, we're recommending that we go ahead with this and update. The, uh, the GIS I map is over ten years old. Uh, there was a flyover done, uh, last year, I think it may have to be upgraded because of some weather changes when it was done, but, uh, this, that, this will let us bring the, the, uh, the map, the single wall, up to date and to be usable by all of the, the departments that rely on that data. Engine, uh, engine five pickup truck, um, uh, this is, uh, a two thousand and seven with fairly high mileage, um, that needs to, that needs to be in service. Uh, we're going to replace this, we're recommending replacing this, and then not disposing of the, the O-seven, but moving it down so that the mechanic would have a vehicle for doing what, what he needs in picking up parts and, and, uh, those kinds of things that the mechanic would do. Uh, the school department, um, this is, the sixty thousand dollars is a, a computer replacement as well, part of a, a multi-year program. Uh, stormwater GIS drain system, data enhancement. Uh, we're required, uh, under EPA regulations to bring our, our, our stormwater, our knowledge of stormwater drains and, and the like up to date. Uh, this was originally in the budget for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We decided that it can be split into two pieces, we're going to fund, we're recommending funding one piece this year and the others, the other piece of it, which would be about half of it, it's about ninety-nine thousand next year. Um, this is not a bondable, uh, item, so that we would have had to have used virtually all of the available cash we had in the budget just to satisfy this, this, uh, item. By moving half of it into next year, we're able to really limit the number of five-year items that are being bonded, so it's a, uh, it gets the project going, uh, and it, it allows us to reduce the, the bonding requirement. DPW highway, the, replace the two thousand and one holder multifunction tractor. This is another item that has been on our list for the past couple of years. It's, it is, as it's described, a multifunction machine, it has adapters on it for a snowblower, for plowing, for flail mower, um, and with some go, back and forth with Dick Carnavalley, we, we decided that, um, this would be, made a lot of sense to, to do this year, that the, the one we have is becoming, uh, not very dependable. This will be used primarily during the winter, we'll still be able to use the, the flail mower that we, we got last year for taking care of wash and not have to, uh, adapt this to it. Uh, after nine feet of snow this year, um, we need to make sure we can get the sidewalks clear and, and particularly for the, the schools. So this one, this one was, was, is on, on our list. Um, I'm not going to go through the, the proposed, the ones we're not funding, uh, this year. As I say, they were all worthy items, but, um, uh, we could not fund everything, and as I say, we, we individually ranked the items, and that's where we came out on, on the ranking, um, and, uh, that was our recommendation. The other recommendation on here is for the, the ambulance, which is estimated to be two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and by the time we buy that, there, there will be enough money in the ambulance reserve, uh, to pay for them. The next slide in the, in the, uh, the ranking sheets is, is the Water Enterprise. Um, I mentioned already that, uh, the biggest item here, the, there's, there's a million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars worth of, of recommendations, a million seven of that is, is the meter program, uh, and as I mentioned, it is a self-funded program, uh, with the, the ability to capture all of the water that is going through the system and, and going out to, to, uh, customers of the, of the water. Other items in here are, um, a, 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 a final environmental report on the, on, on water, um, uh, making some repairs to the, uh, the roof at the lakeside, uh, water treatment plant, uh, replacing the two thousand and five, uh, vehicle and SUV, and doing a study of chlorine residual evaluation, which I'm not going to even try to explain, but it's an important evaluation that the Water Department thought that ought to be, ought to be considered this year, and after looking at the, the recommendation, we agree with that. Uh, there are some items that are not being recommended this year, uh, again, will be looked at for, for next year when we get, get to that, that point. Very, very briefly, I'm just going to go over a couple of tables, um, to show you where we are in the spending and the funding, uh, under this program. Okay. Unless surely you'll be able to read this, nah, not bad.
Yeah.
The top chart is the, the capital spending. So at fiscal sixteen, we're looking to fund two hundred and nine, uh, fifty-nine thousand four hundred and sixteen, uh, dollars of acquisitions out of cash, it's coming from free cash, and the raised appropriate, uh, uh, from the, uh, the June Town Meeting. Uh, we're bonding seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars worth of items, uh, a hundred and forty-two thousand five-year, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand of ten-year, and, um, uh, three hundred and fifty-three thousand of, of fifteen-year. If you look at that five-year row of, uh, on there, the hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, our goal is to get out of the business of, of bonding five-year items, um, and with this program, um, and if, if our, if our spending goes as is, is shown up there in the out-years, and of course it will change because we don't know what, what's going to come up, but this is a good model for, for looking at it as a, as a predictor. Our plan is that, uh, the, the five-year bond will be down to fifty thousand dollars in 2021. At that, that point, uh, we're hoping that we can, this can disappear, and we won't be doing any more of that. So, um, that table looks at the actual that we're recommending for sixteen, uh, with the chapter ninety money in there, uh, it's a million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, big, big number, um, and, um, going out, we're looking at a million four to a million five a year, and as I say, that will vary depending upon what comes up, what the bonding schedule is, the longer the bonding, obviously, the, the more you can do because you're spreading that cost over a longer period of, of time. We have a, a capital stabilization fund. Right now, that's got a balance of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in it. Our plan is to grow that fund. This year, um, we'll be putting money, uh, in there for, from, from the June Town Meeting, as I mentioned, above, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we'll be taking money out of there to fund the items on the, the, the top couple of rows of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Our plan is to put another two hundred thousand dollars in for free cash in June. Um, and because we don't need all of the allocated free cash in, in, in June, uh, the difference between the hundred and fifty and the hundred and thirty-four is fifteen thousand dollars, which we will essentially put back to debt service, and we won't be using it. The important item on here is the very bottom line, the, the ending balance, because, uh, we, we need to grow this in order to be able to fund the items up above. Uh, we're going to spend, the, whatever comes in at Town Meeting in June, we're going to spend, and we're also going to spend out of, out of this fund, uh, any amount we need in order to keep debt service at one point one million dollars. So if you go to the next chart, Liz, this is, the top row on here is the current debt service for non-exempt debt. Where it is on the books right now, we've got a million, a million one seventy-nine of, in this fiscal year, it goes down to, uh, a million eighty-two, a little over a million and, and drops off. With the program that was on the previous slide that showed the roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of acquisitions a year outside of chapter ninety, we would have debt service falling, uh, excuse me, in the out-years that looks something like this, and if you go down to the bottom, Liz.
It's up there.
Up a little bit.
I only have-
Uh, you can't, but any, in any of them. What we're looking at is the annual debt service. As I mentioned, our, our plan is to keep the debt service at a million one or lower. We're going to be able to accomplish that in the next two years by using money in the, the, the debt stabilization reserve to stabilize the debt, that's the purpose of this, and we'll, we'll use a hundred thousand dollars in each of those years to augment the, the, the requirement for, for, uh, debt service that will be on, on the books of the town. After that, this number, uh, will, will continue to go down, uh, with the caveat that we may decide that we need something, uh, two or three years out from now that's going to result in some, some additional bonding. But the way the program looks right now, uh, we can manage the debt service at in the term. Uh, on the, the very last slide, and I get out of here, is the Water Enterprise. Again, the top line here is the, the debt service that is on the books for the Water Enterprise right now. So their debt service for fiscal sixteen is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, goes down to three thirty-one, two oh five, one seventy-five, so their debt service is going down. Having said that, um, there are some, some big water issues coming up down the road that we will need to look at, and that will be one of the things the, the capital pools, uh, committee will be, will be looking at. Uh, we tie into MWRA or do something different with ANDO, or, or do something different on our, our water, that is going to be some costs, and we need to, um, look at that in terms of, of, of long-term debt. But as it is now, what we've got there, that's what the debt schedule looks like, we're going to be adding- We're going to be adding for the two, two items that we're bonding, the million 850,000 dollars. We'll be adding about 257,000 dollars next year, 249 year after. I had mentioned, and we go, if we go down, it, it shows that our, our annual debt service then, 417, 589, 435 and so forth. With the new meters in, we will be capturing additional revenue from the, from the water that is, is now being lost because the, the meters aren't accurately recording the, the use of water that's, that's, that's going, going through the system. That, the, our, our consultants estimate to be about 240,000 dollars of additional revenue. That will pay for the, the debt service on the meters. So this is a, a good thing to do and it's a good time to do it because we're going to, as I said, we're going to have a lot of water capital issues coming up in the future. Getting this one behind us, having, having new meters in place and having a tiny new rival building system, I think, will serve us well. There is a water stabilization fund at the very bottom of this table. It has a balance of, coming into this year, 715,000 dollars. There was 108,000 dollars that will be, will be put in there at town meeting from the, the excesses of the, in the, in the fund. And this pays back all of the balances that were taken from the fund oh, three or four years ago. And then we're going to use 82,500 of that for a few of these small capital items that would have been five years on, on a bonding schedule. So it'll still end up at 742,000 dollars there. The, the Water Enterprise does, is going to require a lot of work to make sure that we've got the, the resources and the program in place to take care of the water needs for the town going forward. That's the end of my presentation, so I'll let you take questions.
Questions? Mr. Steele.
Yes, very well done. Thank you very much. You always do phenomenal work. Question, when I was on the board last time, we had adjusted the rates at a very high level to satisfy the funds that were very depleted at that time, the Stick Me Well Fund and so on. And the rates went pretty high. And we anticipated, I think it was a five-year plan, if I recall, that after that, or maybe it was three years, but after that, the revenue coming in would be significant, significantly higher than, than, once, once the, those funds were filled, we'd be rejuvenating revenue. Where does that stand now?
It stands, first of all, the amount that we pay for water, production of water and purchase of water, goes up every year. So part of that gets absorbed in the increased cost of supplying water. It's a variable though, because water, the amount of water we sell is a function of Mother Nature. Years that we sell more water, we cover more of the overhead and therefore it generates a surplus. So the intent was, after the capital was paid for, we would use it to stabilize the water rate. Meaning that we would try to hold the water rate at a fixed level until we burnt down the surplus. We reached a, a level, you want to have, maintain a surplus. But until we reached the level to which we would have to raise the water rates. We also have major capital expenditures coming as we pursue new sources of water. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure.
We continue to generate a surplus if.
Right, we, we are continuing, continuing to generate a surplus from those increases that.
As far as, as far as I can, we can tell right now, at the end of the fiscal year, you know, our, when they look at our cost and our expenses, we may or may not have a surplus. I don't know how that's going. Maybe our town finance director could take a quick look at how that's. We only have three months, three quarters worth of billing that we have at home now.
Right. I can report back on, on the revenue trend at a future meeting, but I would anticipate the same amount of retained earnings as we achieved as of 7-1-2014. So around, you know, between 100 and 125,000 would be a fair estimate of retained earnings. But I can report back with a, you know, an actual projection.
Thank you.
Mr. Prisco.
Yeah, I got a few questions. On the town road programs, did you, was there a report on what we completed last year from what we approved? Because we seem to approve, I thought, quite a bit of money last year. So I was wondering if you guys had an update on, just to make sure we completed everything we said we were going to pay for last year.
Dick can probably speak better to that. But yeah, we looked, we looked at the, the program and some items would, would carry over. The chapter ninety money can, can carry over from year, year to year. The appropriation of the town needs to be spent within that year. I think that there were some items, some items on the chapter ninety that were, were carried over into this year and they're being worked on. Dick had a request for some, in total, 730, 750,000 dollars. With between chapter ninety and the 100,000 dollars here, we're probably a little over 600,000. So that, it should be, whatever was, was behind ought to be caught up because we're not going to be able to do as much. So we should be able to use all of the chapter ninety money. I'm not, I don't want to speak for you, but that seems to be the.
You want to back?
Okay. You can go, look.
Just to make a correction, I think, that the capital article is an article. Therefore, any money that's in there can be carried forward.
Okay, I'm sorry, 100,000 would be an article.
Regarding the firehouse thing, I really do appreciate the CIP team looking at that. I definitely think we're just kicking the tires right now with the flooring, but that's fine. You know, there's only so much money to go around and it's definitely a good place to start. But I, I would hope that next year it gets analyzed again, at least from the infrastructure standpoint for the kitchen and the living spaces. As you saw those pictures and you've, you've done a tour, you can see that we definitely need to do something.
I think that Mr. Gilberto has, has already indicated to us anyway that he wants to do some more study of the needs there.
Mr. Gilberto.
That's correct. So with regard to that, I think that there are, there's quite a bit of a, not only a direct facility improvement need that exists at the fire department, but also a need to better accommodate the programmatic and operations in the facility as well. And I believe the finance committee has approved funding for essentially a program and building use study to take place before the end of the fiscal year to look at what our options are in that facility for the long-term investment. That was based on discussions that the chief, myself, the DPW director and the building superintendent had with the in-house architect that we've worked with on building projects in the past. So I think we should be able to make some movement on that and be prepared to make a more sophisticated capital request for the bigger picture in the next fiscal year. That's my hope. But thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you. I just have a couple more things. The Holder tractor, 150,000 dollars. I guess I was very surprised on that one. Maybe the DPW director could come up and help you answer this. But what was the analysis done to determine that was the right piece of equipment for 150,000 dollars? Because there seems to be a lot of other pieces of equipment out there that, that do snow blower, has snow blower attachments, far less money than that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gilberto.
I know that the DPW director initially at the request of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, but then subsequently has been looking at options. Dick, I don't know if you want to update the board in terms of what you've looked at. If you could come to the microphone and do so. I think it, to just to summarize, not to overtake the conversation, Don, but we were looking at the Holder with a new, with a, a like piece of equipment to the Holder with new attachments. It was identified that we could basically purchase a converter and not have to buy the new attachments and use our existing attachments. But I know that Dick has been looking at this over the course of the winter, especially as things became more challenging. And he certainly can speak to it better than I can.
Like our limiting factor in this is that with the equipment, there are other pieces of equipment like a Bobcat that could do the work just above, but it's too wide. We have to fit within certain spaces between telephone poles and certain areas and guardrails like going up to high school. So that kind of drives a lot of our decision. There's only three or four vendors of similar machinery. We looked at a tracked version that just does snow plowing, only not, we're looking for something that can use year-round. So Wilmington has it, we saw a demonstration. It's a tracked snow plow, uh, snow blower, does a great job, but you can only use it during the winter. So we, we need something that can mow grass, you know, year-round. So it's unfortunate, we need a jack-of-all-trades vehicle. And it's no jack-of-all-trade vehicles, it's going to be perfect at any one function.
So this tracked vehicle that you referenced, how much is that roughly?
About the same amount.
Really?
Yeah. They're all in the base model, 150,000 with, then you add on the attachments.
Okay.
It's a Bombardier is the name of the brand. It's a Bombardier, the Holder and some call it Trackless. Those are the three major. The Holder is made in Europe. Downside to that is sometimes getting parts, high demand, getting across the ocean. The Trackless is made in Canada and I think the other one's made in Canada as well. So all, all these have an issue when it breaks. Everybody's trying to get the parts and they're always somewhere else. So that, that's a, my career, that's been a problem, this piece of equipment. It's just getting the parts when you need them.
No, and the width is an issue.
Right. We looked at a Bobcat with a snow blower on it through a contractor. It just, it's, we need to keep like 48 inches narrower and these things are 48 and larger. So we did, looked at one, we did it up at, I think the hood school, we tried it out. It didn't do bad, but it was just the, like one wheel would be off the road. So it would be leave snow on the sidewalk. So we have looked at other vehicles unfortunately and it's, it's a limited market for what we need. And, and again, we're trying to rather have two pieces of equipment, one to do year-round work. That kind of drives part of it unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then I just want to thank you for looking at the water meters. I think that's a great effort and a great investment for the town. The last request I would have is for next year. If it's possible to, you know, we have 12 items that are being proposed tonight. Is, and if they get approved, which I'm, I'm assuming they will, is it at all possible next year to start off with just a quick summary of what we approved this particular year in, you know, what, what was completed? Just a quick overview, what was completed, what was funded, how much did we actually spend? So what we budgeted and what we actually spent and what we had left over. I just think it would be real helpful to have that up front before we get into the next years.
That's exactly how we started our, our, our meetings this year. The very first thing we did is said, all right, we approved our, the, the Board of Selectmen and the, and the, and the town meeting approved a whole bunch of stuff. Where are we? Most of it was either done or in, in the works or some that for various reasons were, were delayed. But I think that, that's a good idea.
Just a top summary. That's our one slide if you could do it. As a matter of fact, that may be a great opportunity to talk about the town road programs because as you can see, there's so many places where money's coming in related to the roads. It'd be just nice to kind of have a grasp on what we've done, what we haven't done. Excellent job though, once again, I really love what you guys have done in this program. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary. Just in relation to going forward in, in search of water, what is our anticipated, well, we know the timeline. As we're talking about in five years here, we're hoping to have something else in place, but obviously it's going to require some major capital expenditures. Are we anticipating doing this outside the confines of Proposition Two and a Half? Or are we, you know, how does, how does it fit into the matrix here?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so the chairman and I have had this conversation. Clearly there were a lot of items that need to be addressed. And I met with the DPW director, the water superintendent and our consulting engineers two weeks ago now. And it would be the intention to have a work session with the board to discuss just that issue, both for this upcoming year and then the four to five-year projection with a, a, still a targeted slash identified date for potential change in the way we are supplied water of July 1st, 2019. And that continues to be the target that we're looking at. Still certainly achievable and factoring into our discussions based on the policy direction the board gave in the fall. But the week of, I believe it's May 11th, we're currently scheduled for, to not have a meeting. I believe the intention was to ask the board members if there'd be an ability to have a work session type discussion to go through just that, those items, to look at the costs and look at the alternatives for funding as well.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it would skew our little graph here significantly. And I just didn't know whether it'd fit in or if it'd really fit into the, the CIP's planning.
It will. It, it hasn't yet because we've got to, we got to put, put our arms around what it is we're spending, what the timing is, and then work with, you know, with, with the, the TA on recommendations that we would have for how best to fund that.
Steve.
But we need to get our arms wrapped around what, what, what the whole package is.
I actually look, I tend to look at this water project as something that's really outside of the capital improvement program. It is, it's not like building a new school, but it's, it's a major project. Decisions that we have to make are related to the funding. Is it all tied to the water bill and bonded? Is it an override that's spread over and, and the, you know, the town operating budget is funding part of it? We're still waiting to get more information about the detailed costs. But I think this is a project that is going to stand alone, that it's not going to be part of a capital improvement program. I mean, that, that's my personal opinion. And it's, it's big, big dollars and, you know, if you made it part of the capital improvement program, there might not be room for anything else, depending on how we want to go about financing it. And how we're going to pay for it over the long.
No, no, I just think, you know, obviously we've talked about it for months and months and months, even years, but months in particular. I just thought it would be appropriate to bring it up since we are contemplating it. We're aware of it, it's on the table, it's just still in a state of flux in relation to.
Well, it's, you want to report on your latest meeting?
With regard to.
With Weston and Sampson and Dick and on the water.
Sure, I mean, I think that, you know, from a standpoint of, it's where we're aware of it. I think that we want to be able to advise the board outside of the pressures of having to go through the rate-setting hearing for fiscal year 2016 of all of the moving parts for 2016 and beyond. There's not really much more I am able to, or comfortably able to accurately report at the moment with regard to this. But the, the bottom line is I think that we're aware that there's a significant investment that is going to need to be made and that it would need to be factored into, that it needs to be discussed at a high level before we can really put the details of the plan together and to recommend formal action for the Capital Movement Planning Committee to review. But I think I just restated what the chairman said a different way.
I think part of it is, there's still a lot of moving parts. I don't think we have a clear path we're going to go on number one unless that's decided. I mean, there are options, as you know, the, 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 is potentially getting some funding from them. And then depending on where we go, if we go to the authority, there is, you know, there's a 20 to 25-year interest-free loan to do some of this stuff. So I think there's just too many question marks right now. But I think we've talked about it kind of internally, but not maybe as a whole. And that is probably something you guys should be talking about at that meeting coming up.
Which you're going to miss, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I may just sit in the crowd.
Look at the smile on his face.
He's not getting away that fast.
He already.
I went home.
I went home now.
I've been quiet all night.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
Good question. Do we have a motion there?
There's a motion in there.
Chair, I was looking for a motion. May I just comment? I think the process has been great. I, the, the committee as a whole does a great job. But, but Don, you commented and make, you know, he makes sure we're there, he gets everybody, he gets everybody there at, at these meetings. Everybody participates and it's, it's, it's a cordial group of people that just want to do what we think is, is what's needed, you know, on an annual basis, but also looking down the line, you know, five years to what, what we're going to need and potentially what, what we're going to have to spend. So I just want to commend not only Don, but the whole committee on.
Is, is, is it committed?
No, I know, and, and that's why I said, but I just think, I think you do a great job keeping it together, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Steele.
Is this the first time that we've had this type of presentation? I didn't, I don't recall it when I was on the board three years ago.
No, that's true.
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
It's that third year.
This is the third, this is the third.
Just a quick, I'd give a quick background if you want, Jeffrey. Several years ago, I think there was an issue with. Um, several years ago, I think there was an issue with department heads. We were sending these to, to the TA, and he was kind of putting them on a list. And I think the discussion opened up at that point, three years ago, where we felt, um, it shouldn't be done here in our lottery, that, that there should be a group together that, and everybody has the right to present their, their needs to the committee. And, um, and then still the committee had questions for, for, for the department heads, but gave us an opportunity to, to get those questions answered in a more detailed, um, way, in a different environment, and then bring them before the, rank them, and then bring them before the, um, this board selection.
I mean, this is such a, a, a good idea. Um, it, it, it just, it's smooth. Uh, there's vetting that's already been done. So when it comes to us, uh, the, most of the questions or many of the questions have been answered. So it, it is a great process. So, um, that's, I was going to ask that question, but it's been done before. Uh, so this is good. Thank you.
You know, I, I think, uh, we have to also acknowledge the effort that the Finance Department, headed by, uh, this Liz, that, uh, has put all the numbers together, done that part of the.
She's definitely a group effort, that's for sure. Thank you.
Michael, would it be better if, uh, you constructed an article which also listed
the funding sources and that we approve it at our next meeting? Would that be more convenient?
Sure, we could do that. That might be more straightforward.
That works for me.
Steve? General consensus of the Board to support what was proposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sure. I, CIP team probably doesn't need to have to come here for that.
No.
So we don't have to, we don't have to have a motion on this?
So the intent is to, uh, construct a motion that lists all of the items that were presented this evening and also identifies the funding sources for each of them.
From May fourth meeting.
For a May fourth meeting. Okay, FY two thousand sixteen budget discussion, Mr. Ford.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right on schedule, too.
We're right on schedule. I don't know why.
So for tonight's, for tonight's purposes, the, this is broken down into two sections. The first is to discuss amongst the Board the closeout of the FY budget, FY two thousand sixteen budget. And then at eight o'clock, there'd be the informational hearing where the public could certainly ask any questions that they may or may not have. And the department heads are present to answer any questions that may be asked of them. In going through the process, um, I'll review the memorandum that I put in the drop box and that emailed around to the Board members as well, more for the edification of the public. But, um, essentially we went through and we've revised the available revenue share as of what took place at the, as of discussions at the April seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen Financial Planning Team meeting, which identifies for a total available revenue share for the selectmen as fourteen million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. The Town Administrator's Budget Expenditure Recommendation of February thirteenth was predicated on an allocation of fourteen million, five hundred and fourteen dollars. We went through and there were budget process amendments that needed to be made. Um, I believe that most of them have been discussed in the hearings here. Uh, and they involve changes to the DPW stormwater accounts, the CPC budget, the Police Department salary account, and a, a reduction in the DPW stormwater drain inspection request as a result of the funding of the DPW stormwater improvements in the capital plan at thirty thousand dollars. So going through that, we ended up in a situation with approximately three hundred thousand dollars remaining in items that were not funded, that either were identified, uh, in the February thirteenth memorandum, or have been identified in discussions since the balance, uh, since the budget recommendation was put forth on February thirteenth, with approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars being available. It's my recommendation going through that there'd be three items that'd be implemented. The first is, uh, twenty-three thousand dollars to increase the IT staff position from point six to one point oh full-time employee. And in doing that, we'll be able to add responsibilities relative to public safety ID, IT functions. The second, um, uh, item that I would recommend is a, a smaller number with regard to the merit increases, which, of which fifty thousand dollars was not funded. I'd be recommending that we expend fifteen thousand dollars, which would bring the thirty thousand, bring it to thirty thousand dollars, uh, but less, essentially would be less than half of what it was for fiscal year twenty fifteen. I'm looking at the Finance Director at sixty-five thousand dollars, right, for this year. So for next year, it would be a total of thirty thousand. Um, the remaining items that I've identified is to increase the point eight, um, Building Superintendent position to a one point oh. And that's by a factor of point two at an expense of twelve thousand dollars. And, um, while the proposal was made in February for that to be a standalone position at point eight full-time employee, if the schools did not fund the, the point two portion of it, um, after further discussion over the past few weeks and months, um, we believe that, uh, it may be beneficial to the town to make that a one point oh full-time employee person, we may be able to attract a, a better candidate by making it a one point oh full-time, uh, position. The, um, so that is the extent of the, uh, the items for, that I'm recommending the Board address. Out of that, three hundred thousand dollars in essentially unfunded items, that leaves a balance of a hundred and fifteen thousand, forty-eight dollars available. Um, and I've identified the following items as, uh, on, um, as, uh, to be determined, pending the Board's discussion this evening. The first would be, um.
Mike, before we get into it, does the Board have any questions or issues with respect to the items that Michael is proposing?
Funding.
Funding.
Just the, what he's proposing to fund, you're asking.
Yes. Mr. O'Leary.
Just in relation to, um, budget process amendments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you stated that there was sixty-five thousand dollars available for merit increases.
In fiscal year twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. And we're looking to supplement that for the Police Department salaries? An additional sixty-four hundred?
No. Um, I, I, for comparison purposes, I identified the sixty-five thousand dollars as the number for merit increases. The June, the February thirteenth Town Administrator's recommendation identified fifteen thousand dollars and that there was a balance of fifty thousand dollars that had not been funded. Um, I've modified that fifty thousand to only fifteen thousand dollars at this point.
But that's for the upcoming fiscal year.
That's correct.
I'm talking about the current fiscal year that we're in, where they were in. We had allocated or appropriated approximately sixty-five thousand dollars?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. But that did not cover, or does not cover at this point, the sixty-four hundred being proposed.
It does for fiscal year twenty fifteen, but not for fiscal year twenty sixteen.
So the sixty-four hundred is coming out of the salary pool, the salary pool, sixty-five thousand dollar figure combined?
That's correct. For, for fiscal year twenty fifteen.
Okay. But going forward for two thousand and sixteen fiscal year?
Mm-hmm.
It does not cover that.
The modification of the sixty-four hundred dollars going to the Police Department salaries would address that, um, because it would not be, at that point, contingent in fiscal year twenty sixteen. It would be, uh, in effect on July first.
Correct.
You know, Seth, Steve?
Uh, as far as the explanation, I suppose, yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
And again, just, just one other thing. So as far as the Building Superintendent, point two full-time equivalent, even if the School Department, they have not, or they are?
It, it was in their initial request, but as they went to reconcile, they needed to remove it.
But you're still recommending it?
Uh, I'm recommending that we pick up the point two FTE difference. That's correct. Again, as I said on February thirteenth, I believe that it could be advertised at point eight, but I, I, my concern is that we may struggle to, to get, uh, we may struggle with the candidates that we, that we receive. I, I just don't know. We haven't advertised that yet.
Mr. Ford.
So my question to the Town Administrators, and regarding the Building Superintendent, is that, will that be funded at, at what the current?
It'd be less.
Okay. And then is there?
There's a salary, it'd be less. I'm sorry. I jumped in and answered your question before you asked it.
You, you take a like. Was there not a discussion about having someone also who physically could do some work on?
There is. The, the current model as recommended in the February thirteenth budget, the point eight full-time employee would be the Building Superintendent, and there would be a one-point oh laborer person that would work in the department for purposes of doing, uh, performing maintenance responsibilities.
So now we'll have the one full-time superintendent and the?
Laborer.
Yeah. Okay, great. I just want to make sure that wasn't changed. Thank you.
Mr. Priska.
So was there going to be a reduction on the contract services side?
Um, I expect that there'll be a reduction with regard to the contracted maintenance services, yes. Um, based on the responses that the DPW Director has had from the market trying to gauge what would happen if we were to go out to bid with, when we go out to bid, presuming that this budget goes into effect. Um, for, uh, janitorial and cleaning services, we forecast that there may be an increase, um, in the amount. But for the maintenance work such as, uh, trades work, plumbing, electrical, um, type work, we believe that having a laborer in place may reduce those expenses. And we actually reduced the con, the allowance in, before we went through and made the modifications for the janitorial services based on what the market was indicating, we actually reduced the, the amount recommended for the maintenance functions. Looked at the Finance Director. I don't remember how much we reduced it from. I thought it was at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and it went down to a hundred thousand during the budget review.
To one oh eight?
From one oh eight or to one oh eight, Dick?
One twenty-five.
To one oh eight. We made a reduction to try to take credit for that.
Yeah. Good. That's good.
Anyone else? Anyone want to continue then?
Certainly. So the items that it leaves for discussion amongst the Board this evening are, uh, the following items. Um, the, and I'll preface it by saying, we, we did go through, as we explained at the last meeting, and, um, take credit for the so-called, um, milfoil, um, not, excuse me, for the flood mitigation expenditure, um, and rolled it into the debt service because it's clear that the, uh, work that needs to be done, um, can't be done in the timelines associated with the borrowing. But before we did that, we put forth an allowance for approximately twenty-one thousand dollars for the first year of the Martins Pond, um, milfoil treatment. Um, I was presuming that that payment would be, that money would be able to be expended in a timely manner.
What do you, excuse me, what do you mean by timely manner? What's the timeline associated with that twenty-one thousand dollars?
I, I think it's a, it's a difficult issue because I, I believe that we're well past the deadlines already. I think that the answer we've gotten is, uh, construction season, if I recall, from the, um, Finance Director. I want to say that it was November, we were told. But again, I defer to the conversation that she had.
As previously discussed, um, we had multiple discussions with Bond Council and our financial advisor, First Southwest, in regards to bond proceeds that still sit on the books today. Um, so one of them that actually is on the books and was originally borrowed for Route sixty-two culvert, you have to go back to the original borrowing. So the current, um, Martins Pond flood mitigation, uh, bond proceeds was originally Route sixty-two culvert. So you have to go back to the original, um, issuance of, of the bond proceeds and then, then move forward to see when you should have spent it by. So we should have already spent all of the now-current, uh, Martins Pond flood mitigation money. They instructed us that if we were to reprogram the bond proceeds, they need to be for a like purpose with the same amount of turn, uh, same amount of life, um, that we borrowed for the Route sixty-two culvert, and, um, that we need to have those funds spent on or about September, November. So to choose projects that would be complete in a timely manner.
So the dollar amount associated with the remainder of that bond is how much? And where are we suggesting it be appropriated to, for what purposes?
So the current, um, balance in the Martins Pond flood mitigation, um, capital project is a hundred and thirty-two thou, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five seventy-two, I believe, or two seventy-two.
And we're proposing to use that for Rome?
So we are, um, re-appropriating a hundred and twelve, five seventy-two. The current balance is one thirty-four, five seventy-two, and we are re-appropriating one twelve, five seventy-two. And it is part of the capital plan. Um, and I believe that there is more than one item that it goes towards.
It's all going towards the.
Oh, it's all going towards the holder.
Okay.
Which is noted on the ranking sheet in, in the capital plan. So a hundred and twelve, five seventy-two is being used towards the hundred and fifty thousand that we would borrow for the holder. We can borrow for the holder for up to fifteen years, and Route sixty-two culvert was borrowed for fifteen years.
And then the remaining twenty-one thousand, seven hundred is being proposed be held in a balance for the Martins Pond situation. But if there's a, a delay in permitting for them to do so, what happens?
Ideally, we would want to use the funds as soon as possible.
Right, but that may not be feasible. You know, be, be before September, for sure, um, because of the permitting and hearings process that they have to go through. But from a fiscal year standpoint, okay, but this isn't tied to fiscal year necessarily. So if, if it's not as soon as possible, whatever that means, um, what happens to the funding?
I'm sorry?
What happens to the twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars?
Nothing happens to it. Um, you know, you can run into issues with not so much in this, this time period where interest rates are so low. But if you have bond proceeds that you aren't using and you borrowed for a project and you're supposed to spend it within the terms of, um, you know, arbitrage, we run into an issue. Uh, we could be fined, we could be penalized. But, you know, um, twenty-one thousand of the original borrowing is not a huge percentage, but we should have already spent it all by now anyways.
Yeah, but we know we didn't. Uh, Mr. Jim, do you have permission? My, my concern is, is that we're allocating this, um, source of funding, this twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars to be utilized up for, as upfront funds, funding for this, um, project undertaking. And from a timeline standpoint, we may not be able to meet it or accommodate on a timely basis. Already we're beyond the time limitations, but, I mean, if we're putting ourselves in a, in a situation to be penalized in some fashion, why couldn't we reallocate it for other purposes and free up, free cash or other things, you know, for other appropriate purposes, for those other things within the capital proven plan here that, that may qualify and free up that cash to be unencumbered in relation to the project that we're looking to want to take here?
Steve, I think one of the, uh, things that she faced was finding something that was in the same bondable timeframe.
Right.
Which is fifteen years. So, uh, is it possible to find some other things within the capital plan?
I, I would suggest that if you couldn't use the twenty-one seven, you were going to run out of time, we're using a hundred and twelve thousand of that for the holder. I would use the balance of it for the holder as well. And then that would bring the holder down to, um, above fifteen thousand dollars, which is the amount of free cash we're giving back. We just wouldn't give that back. So the, the, the capital budget would, would absorb it.
But that's freed up some money somewhere.
But that freed, what, it does not free up the twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars?
No.
What up? Okay, I'm missing it.
No. All I'm saying is if you, if it was, you, you needed to do something with it before September or November, whatever that time, day, timeframe is, and you don't have the permitting to, to do the, the milfoil, uh, it could be applied against the tractor the, the way the rest of the, that, that bonding is being used.
Okay, and I don't disagree with that. But my concern is the, the upfront, upfront funds that would be necessary to address the situation over at Martins Pond within the coming fiscal year.
Just a question, thank you.
Again, it might not happen by September or November, but it may very well happen by next spring. And what we're saying is, is this twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars which is being allocated for the upfront cost is what would be available and nothing else. So, or we're shortchanging it and only partially funding the program. You're referring, look there, Michael, am I confusing you?
No, I, I'm, I guess, is it, I just want to make sure that, is it clear that the next part of the presentation is freeing up a chunk of money to be available on a warrant article with no time limitation? a chunk of money to be available in a warrant article with no time limitation on it? We haven't gotten to that part of it yet, but.
No, but what we're doing here now is we're anticipating or hoping that from a short-term timeframe between now and September or November, this project will be able to utilize twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. And my understanding is that might be a stretch and a challenge. If that's being the case, then we're not necessarily embracing the full funding of it and we're kind of masking that. And then leaving the program for future appropriations with future boards and future town meetings and future finance committees and everything else. So I guess, the first question is, you know, is the board gonna embrace the entire program? Or are we gonna try to embrace a piecemeal approach?
Well, what I'm hearing is because there's a level of risk, that twenty-two or twenty-three thousand dollars, right, is not available to fund.
That's my guess based upon the information that I have and again.
Martins Pond issue.
Janet, maybe.
But it wouldn't go to waste.
I know it's not gonna go to waste.
Would save on bonding, but it doesn't help that out.
It doesn't help the situation and it probably shouldn't be okay there.
Maybe we should have the discussion of the pros and cons of funding one year, three years, or five years' worth of the program.
Yeah, and don't mask it by saying what you hope to do, what is that?
And prioritize it against what money we have left and the few other items that are on the list. Maybe we should have a discussion and then come back to the financing issue.
Right, but I think it would be important for the board to hear from Mr. Kozier in relation to anticipated timeline and the ability to meet that deadline in order to utilize the twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. You know, otherwise, yeah, just re-appropriate it for the bonding, you know, for the holder. I know it's not gonna go to waste, but you know, let's not give any false hope or false impression that here's the money we're looking to appropriate ninety-one thousand dollars for this program over a five-year period when we really are not. In this case, let's say we're not, or let's say, let's do it.
Well, I'm gonna ask another question first then. Is there anything in the capital plan that we're paying for out of free cash that could be bonded to use up the rest of their money?
Well, yeah, we're using, right now, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars worth of, excuse me, we're using a hundred and, yes, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in free cash for items in the capital plan. Anywhere from, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars for the IT equipment, thirty-six thousand dollars for the pickup truck. So there are, there are items that we moved into cash when we reduced that, the stormwater GIS.
So the question is, is there anything that would qualify for bonding that we're paying for free cash?
Yes, yeah.
So then why don't we just make that adjustment and that'll make that free cash available?
Then it sets back the goal of moving more stuff, less than five years. I mean, like, the truck is bondable for how long? The thirty-five thousand dollar truck that we just, thirty-six thousand dollar truck?
Five years.
Five years, right. And again, I know the goal is to get more of the five-year bonding stuff into the budget rather than into bonding. But if we have other situations like this and you could take twenty-two thousand dollars of that, reallocate the free cash to this particular project and then find the difference. Liz?
One of the reasons why we didn't look at that avenue was that the free cash and raise and appropriate funds were set aside as part of the capital improvement plan that we have been working on. And the capital improvement planning committee met this morning and discussed the topic of milfoil. And milfoil doesn't, isn't classified as capital. So we would be taking funds away from the capital improvement plan for something that doesn't qualify under the capital, you know, improvement plan.
No, you missed, no, you're missing the, we have a, we have a bond that we haven't utilized or spent all of the money. Right? So the question is, can we use that money that we have, right, to help fund the capital plan, like you're doing already, right? To use the rest of it up. On an item that you're currently planning to fund in the capital plan by free cash.
Right.
Which would mean that that free cash would then become available and we could apply it.
It wouldn't become available for the reason that we then are not following the capital plan with the free cash that we allocate every year. Is that correct, Mr. House?
Yeah. It violates the spirit of the, of the program, okay? If you start taking, taking money out of it. I understand what you're trying to do.
It's a four million dollar program and the spirit of the program is not eleven thousand dollars.
No, but the, the spirit of the program is that there is an annual allocation from free cash in June. There's an annual raise and appropriate amount in June. And that's, the program is built in large part upon the reliability of those funds. That's, that's the issue. The milfoil, we did talk about that. I mean, it is, it's not a capital project and you're not trying to make it a capital project, I understand that. It's that we're using the funding vehicle for the capital project to shift things around to accommodate that need.
Mr. Frisco.
Maybe we should go to the public hearing section and then, because I need to understand the whole milfoil. What, what is required? Because I've seen a bunch of different numbers and I've talked to Janet. We've had a lot of phone conversations. I think the number we're talking about is fifty-six thousand dollars, but I'm not clear. I've read in tonight a different number that I hadn't seen before. So we can kind of maybe figure that out because we have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that up till this point is freed up. And we haven't gone through that next section of the town administrator's presentation here that's in front of us. So we have some money before we start messing with the CIP money. Maybe we can try to see what falls out of that one fifteen.
I just started to say that prior to us further diverging.
Okay.
Maybe we ought to look at the entire list of items and determine what the board's priorities are on this list.
We have a hundred and fifteen, so.
We can come back and do that after the public hearing? Or talk about it at the end of the public hearing, before we close the hearing?
Yeah, we could close the hearing and then come back to this discussion here.
But it may be part of the budget, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the intent was to get a consensus of the board, get resolved.
Resolve that before, but we used up the time.
Well, I only have one item, go on.
Why don't we, why don't we just quickly make a list of the items that are on the wishlist?
So netting, so the reason you're seeing different numbers is we did net out the first year from the appropriation at twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. So just to use the numbers that everyone is familiar with, to fully fund the five-year program for the milfoil, it's approximately ninety-one thousand dollars. I looked at Mr. Kozier to confirm that. To partially fund the program over, I think, three years would be fifty-six thousand dollars. There's a request that was made of the recreation, the Parks and Recreation Commission for an additional fifty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars in subsidy from the general fund for the enterprise. As I identified at the last meeting, the need for additional human resources capacity in the town hall, and I had that plugged, at approximately eighty thousand dollars. Additional staff time for the finance office in the position of assistant finance director at eleven thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And then finally, the expanded wastewater treatment, which I know was brought up at the Saturday budget hearing. I do recommend that we consider it, but I recommend we consider it for FY twenty seventeen. I don't have a number that'll go with it at this point in time. Just to put my notes in with regard to those items for the purposes of the board's discussion, for the human resources and assistant finance director position, it wouldn't be my recommendation to implement those changes at this point in time based on the competing priorities that have been identified.
Just in relation to the finance office, we're still proposing a new full-time position?
We are, that's correct.
But not proposing to fully fund a full-time assistant finance director position, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So maybe anticipated to come back at the next fiscal year, increasing additional staffing for the finance department?
I would expect that both of those items would be, would be looked at, both the staffing for the finance department and the staffing in human resources as well. Again, this is a recommendation based on the priorities that have been identified over the past six or so weeks in the discussions that have been identified.
Mr. Frisco.
So just based on that summary, if you take the fifty-nine thousand dollars that's being requested from Parks and Rec, at least you fit over fifty-five thousand dollars that we could do, use for the milfoil. Based on the town administrator's recommendation.
And ignore the other players.
Based on his recommendation, yeah. And the expanded wastewater treatment facility, he's recommended for FY two thousand seventeen and I, I don't disagree with that. I think it gives us, because I think between now and FY two thousand seventeen, there is a lot of planning that has to take place. And I believe there is some consulting money already in the DPW budget to get some assistance to try to work on some of the plans and what we need to do to execute, tying in town facilities into the school wastewater treatment facility. I think some of that work can be done under our existing funds. But I agree that probably with the limited amount of money we have to deal with and with the priorities on this piece of paper, especially with the milfoil and the Parks and Recreation, I think we're there. If we're short, we're short a thousand bucks.
That's if, I'm sure you're, the board.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just summarizing.
Yes, I just want to get some clarification, Mike. The recreation was approved at fifty-nine five eighty-seven. Are you saying to take that, some of that money and apply it? I, I.
Wasn't approved. No.
No, it's recommend, that's what I mean, I'm sorry. My, my.
No, no, I'm sorry. The town administrator had left us off with, he's got a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, forty, a hundred and fifteen thousand forty-eight dollars left. If you look at the five items at the bottom of his letter, the way he has it broken out.
Right.
If you take the fifty-six thousand, if you take the fifty-nine thousand five eighty-seven that the rec wants, that's gonna leave you over fifty-five thousand dollars that we could use for the milfoil. And I think, I don't want to speak for the Martins Pond folks, but I think they could probably make that work. And then we're balanced, for the lack of a better term.
Michael, can you just clarify something for me?
Yeah.
I'm taking one fifteen, subtracting the fifty-nine five eighty-seven for the recreation. And that leaves me with, I'm sorry.
I may have done my numbers wrong.
No, I think you're right.
It's fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my numbers are wrong. Yeah, I got you.
Now, as far as the recreation budget as proposed, the proposing, you know, utilizing the enterprise fund to, correct me if I'm wrong, by the, all the positions, what they're looking for is an additional subsidy to mitigate the need to raise funds.
Through their fees.
Through their fees to support the programs.
That's correct. And their subsidy is presently recommended, the town administrator's budget, at a hundred and forty thousand dollars, Liz, is that there? Approximately a hundred and forty thousand, forty thousand dollars. But as they presented in their budget presentation, they're requesting an additional fifty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven.
So we're looking to increase the subsidy from a hundred and forty to two hundred thousand dollars approximately.
That's what they've requested, yes.
But the way that your current budget recommendation to us does not include.
That was not funded.
Correct.
It was not funded. And program-wise, nothing was changed.
From the town administrator's recommendation of February thirteenth, correct, no change.
Now, we heard something, I think, Liz, in relation to subsidizing the enterprise. What's, what's the issue with that? And again, I don't have, I do want to hear what the issue was first, is that I.
Enterprise funds should be self-sustaining, self-supporting. The Department of Revenue frowns upon the general fund subsidizing and increasing that subsidy each year. They want to see that subsidy being reduced, not increased.
And what is the solution to that? Is it to take it out of the, take it out of an enterprise and create another revolving?
That is one area that Maureen and I have looked at to see and we will continue discussions. Maureen has found some information from other communities that they have been able to increase the allowable carryover balance in the revolving funds. It's not something that we could do for FY sixteen. We would have to have it be an enterprise fund for FY sixteen and work from now until budget time for FY seventeen on, you know, getting special legislation to change the allowable carryforward balance in the revolving fund.
Now, is there, and again, I know the Department of Revenue likes to see a decrease in subsidies for enterprise. And it's just a cap, some sort of, I don't know, it was an artificial cap that's placed on revolving funds. Did you say you need special legislation for it or we need special legislation in order to take it out of the enterprise and put it into revolving?
No, no, what, what Maureen was researching was that they limit the amount that you can, carry forward in the revolving funds.
And then is that a percentage of?
And expen, and expend, right. So you have limitations on bringing money in and expending money in a revolving fund. So that was why almost four years ago now, Parks and Rec went to the enterprise funds. And it's just not working for them. It's not that they're not achieving retained earnings, they're still earning retained earnings. But every time we go to set the tax rate, we get scrutinized. They want a listing of our fees because we're not bringing in enough revenue of what we estimate every year to bring in enough revenue. Now, we don't overspend by any means. If we're not bringing in the revenue, then Parks and Rec doesn't spend, similar to Hillview. If Hillview's not bringing in the revenue, they're not going to, you know, buy a new lawnmower. So they're not overspending or living beyond their means by any, by any means. But the Department of Revenue does not want to see that subsidy increasing. A few years back, we had to increase that subsidy at an October town meeting and that was, you know, frowned upon. They wanted more detail on, you know, their estimated revenues and what leagues they had signed up and what their fees were for every program and what programs they were running in order to make sure that they would actually achieve those estimated revenues. So there's concerns with achieving the actual revenues from the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue doesn't care if you say, well, if I don't, you know, sign this soccer league up, I'm not gonna spend fifty thousand dollars. You have an approved budget and they assume that you're gonna spend your approved budget.
Bring it in.
Right.
Right. I don't know, two-page listings here of many communities that it's been approved through, through the governor. The, it's just a hack increasing the expenditure limit on revolving funds in the town of, so a lot have done it. It's just, we're not an enterprise in a true sense. We're just not a big enough town to be an enterprise. We don't have, like we said before, swimming pools, hockey grounds, things like that that bring in tons of money. We're a recreation department and a parks department that's just trying to keep parks clean and make rent mow. And in oh eight, when it was cut, that made us have to fund more salaries, which put us over the cap. What actually happened, so we really are true revolving. And the only way to do that is get that expenditure, our cap lifted, so. Thank you, we'll come back.
And is there a, Mr. Chairman, is there a way of breaking out Parks and Recreation, keeping one an enterprise and one, and make one a revolving? Would that help solve the problem? Or are the funds interchangeable, are you using it interchangeably?
We subsidize each other though. The Parks and Recreation Department, we, we have, you know, the same office, the same, you know, and all that. So if we split it. You know, and all that, so if we split it, you know, once you have one an enterprise, we're going to be in the same boat as far as meeting those revenues. If we have a bad, you know, a bad revenue growth, or it's going, we're going to be in the same boat.
No, I, I recall why we said, uh, put in the enterprise so that we wouldn't be capped, you know, the way we're capped now. But now we're having a, a revenue problem and a, a fast problem, but-
It's just like, as it said, it's a scrutinized by-
So, to, you know, to me, to me, you know, that if it's not working, it's not working, you know, call it what it is and,
Right.
Make it a revolving, fund again, and then ask for relief on the cap. But again, you say we can't do that for two thousand and sixteen. And again, subsidizes to the level that we, that we can afford to do it. You know, I, I think at times, you know, we're faced with, with challenges, and I think this milfoil issue over in Martins Pond rises to a level where, you know, we have to take some action and commit to a five-year program, knowing that it's not at risk, you know, partway through. In other words, if we're going to buy into it, buy into it. If we're not, you know, then I, I think a haphazard approach of not ensuring that the funding is there is, is somewhat dangerous. So to me, from a prioritization standpoint, as much as I'm sympathetic and would like to assist in the subsidizing of the recreation and Parks and Recreation Department, because I think it's for what they do and all that they've done and the money they raise, they deserve some relief. And I think we get a pretty good bang for our buck as far as what we're actually appropriating, you know, for the program. But we may not be able to do it all in one year, and we have issues like this that, that arise, we just need to prioritize again. So if we phase this in over a two-year period.
I, I guess, you know, I'm kind of in between on the, on the milfoil, from the, the issue of a three-year program versus a five. Because from my perspective, it's not a five-year program, it's going to be an ongoing program.
Right.
So whether we fund it for three years or fu, or five years, it's still an, an ongoing program. I would think that if we fund three years, we'd have a little better idea of what the ongoing numbers are going to be and just build it into the budget. So I, you know, I, I think that funding it for three years is adequate. That being said, I'm not a hundred percent convinced of funding the Recreation Department, in spite of all that they do. And they do have some control over the programs that they run. And those that are not generating enough revenue, they could make adjustments. So, you know, maybe there's some middle ground on both of these. Mr. Frisco.
So Mr. Leary, we, I, I agree that we have to do something on the milfoil, but I'm not sure we're on the same page about what has to be done. Because you're saying a five-year program, but I've heard a couple of things on the five-year program. You know, the one that I'm in support of is five years includes two years of doing applications, but five years of total, or three years of total monitoring, or five years of total monitoring. And I think that's fifty-six thousand dollars. So I think you get your five years there, but we're, we're definitely going to dedicate two years of putting applications in there. Because funding for year three, four, and five, we may not need that money because it could work. I think when you have monitoring, we're paying for monitoring, we're going to be getting the feedback well in advance so we, this board could react to the issues. And then we can always, obviously, if it becomes an emergency, then we get the support of our Finance Committee involved and we deal with the issue. But I, I really wouldn't be in favor of having five years of applying applications in a budget already set aside. I just, it just doesn't seem necessary to me.
I think from a, from a timing standpoint and an appropriation standpoint, what we, what we're up against here is, is the calendar, the appropriate time for, for treating and then analyzing the effectiveness of that treatment does not necessarily fall in, in cycle with our appropriation process. And as far as when they're actually capable of, of undertaking this whole program after the permitting process and hearing process take place, they need to be able to jump into it, have the program in place, and react to whatever i- is occurring. And, you know, if they don't have to spend it in three years and it's going to be an ongoing program, then the funding goes beyond the five-year program. I just think it's a, you know, commitment to a, a proposal, a well-thought-out proposal as to how to attack the problem over an extended period of time. There's no doubt, there's going to be additional monitoring needed to be after five years and things of that nature. But within that timeframe, they will have had the necessary resources to attack the problem, assess it appropriately, without having to guess in relation to our appropriation process. So it's, I think the commitment of the ninety-one thousand dollars is of significant importance, not to the community as a whole and the resource of Martins Pond, the resource of the community. And I think we should embrace the program in, in its entirety, and again, not leave it to conjecture or, or, um, future, uh, whims of potential, future boards or committees or town meeting. Because I think it's important enough to, to attack the problem in this whole phase rather than a piecemeal approach. And I think, you know, I think it's important, again, Michael's had some conversations with, with Janet, and I've had some conversations, and she's sent some correspondence to the entire board in relation to the rationale as to why ninety-one instead of fifty-six, and maybe if we were to hear it again, it may help, but it may bolster your argument. But if you're not opposed to it, I'm just calling her to explain why the ninety-one instead of the fifty-six.
Would it be fair to poll the board?
Wouldn't it be more fair to hear it first?
I think so.
Hear the explanation?
Yep.
Well, why don't we open the budget hearing and go through it, and we'll get to that.
Um, while you're discussing various uses for the additional hundred and fourteen thousand, um, I would like to remind the board that the Board of Selectmen initially suggested the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year be set aside for OPEB. In an effort to balance both the school as well as the town budgets this year, that amount was decreased to one twenty-five. I believe that the town administrator has recommended if there's any money remaining, after you gentlemen have deliberated these various items, that that be put towards OPEB. I think the Finance Committee feels fairly strongly that while two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year is never going to solve our overall OPEB problem, it is a number that the board came up with after talking with, um, accountants, et cetera. And I think, I believe the hope was that it would at least fund the OPEB liability for new hires. So I urge you to consider restoring some of the original map that you had, were planning on putting into OPEB this year.
Thank you, Abby. Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, Abby. She's, uh, she is, she's correct if, just for the, the public and for those watching at home, the last line in my report, I'll identify. If there, after the deliberations, there's no priority that's identified, that would be my, my recommendation, that the balance of funds go towards the OPEB.
So you want the last forty-eight holes for OPEB?
Whatever the number may be.
Okay.
So I think, was the consensus to, to hear from Martins Pond?
Yes, yes, I would like to. But before you do that, just make sure, we still have a warrant article related to milfoil and, that we can consider as well. Right? Is that still?
There is, there is a separate warrant article for this project, and depending upon the outcome of this discussion, these funds would essentially be allocated under that warrant article to fund the program.
I just want to make sure it was still there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there some spokesperson?
Oh, we have to open the hearing, right? Do you want to open the hearing?
I'll open it, public hearing, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Hi, first, thank you so much for all your work on our behalf. I've met with Mike a couple of times, talked with Steve and Mike, and, um, obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a tough situation, but let's talk about the numbers. So the numbers are that we have, what essentially I did when, or we did when we talked to the, the two, there are two contractors involved. There's Merrimack Colleges that does the study and monitoring, and then there's ACT Aquatic Control Technology that does the treatment. So I asked each one of them to give us a schedule for year one, two, three, four, or five, so that we could then see, and, and this was after a meeting that Mike came to our, our Recommendation Study Committee meeting, and we decided, okay, is this where we can kind of have a menu of what is it that we need? What can we do? So we all agreed that in, in order to think about, we want to think about a five-year plan as far as what are we going to do over, over the next five years. And our, our original intention was that whatever we formulated would be such that we wouldn't, we try not to have to come back to town meeting within five years. There was a lot of education campaign that had to be done in order to get us to this point where we had a pretty good consensus in the neighborhood on what needed to be done for the pond. So I think, you know, using that momentum and getting ready to tackle this issue, we thought, okay. The most important thing is to have a lake management plan with monitoring every year. So that total amount is twenty-six thousand, eight hundred. So that's Merrimack Colleges' lake management plan, which is, which is, it'll be longer than five years, but it's a, it's pretty specific for five years. What is the situation upon which we then go to treatment? When we do a certain kind of monitoring, what kind of monitoring is done, and then what threshold do, does it then trigger the point where you then need more treatment? We plan to go to conservation, hopefully this May, to ask for a five-year permit for treatment of the herbicide. So twenty-six, eight is like the beginning number, I would say. And then we said, okay, so let's look at the five years of monitoring. Five years of monitoring is about, is, excuse me, of treatment, I'm sorry. Twenty-six, eight is five years of mon, of monitoring. Seventy-three thousand, eight seventy-five. Seventy-three thousand, eight seventy-five is five years of treatment. This is just an estimate. If the treatment works better, it could be less. This is the ACT Aquatic Control Technologies estimate. Um, the first year is twenty-two thousand, five hundred. Second year is sixteen thousand, one twenty-five, because they usually expect they'll have to come back, back in year two. And then the year three is thirteen thousand, five hundred. Year four and five are each ten thousand, eight seventy-five. Now, so what I presented to my friends here on the board was that at minimum, I thought it was important to do two years of treatment, but do the five years of monitoring. So that at minimum, we've had one year of treatment, a second year of treatment, and been able to have three years of monitoring. So let's say the permit goes through and it's approved in May, we're able to treat in June. So that's year one of monitoring and year one of treatment. Then the next year, we, we need to treat a little bit again. We have year two of monitoring, year two of treatment. At that point, that fifty-six thousand runs out. And so then we would need to, if we needed, after the third year, if the monitoring told us that we would need to treat again in year three, four, or five, we would need to come back and ask for the money. But tho, that year thir, three, year four, and year five is thirteen thousand, five hundred, or ten thousand, eight seventy-five, or ten thousand, eight seventy-five. So, um, if you're seeing it's not totally adding up, it's because Martins Pond Association kicked in about ninety-five hundred dollars into us, of our own money. So the fifty-six thousand that we said was at minimum, five years of monitoring, two years of treatment. So that after that second year of treatment, we're able to see how things go and see if we need to treat in year three. But it does put us in a situation where if we have to treat in year three, we think we're going to have to treat in year three, then we have to wait for a June town meeting, and when you do do the herbicide treatments, you can do certain, certain treatments in April and May and June, and we're talking about, you know, July one is our start on funding, and there's only one herbicide you can use in July. And even this year, we're a little bit, it's a little hazy about whether we're going to be able to get out there and do it in July. Number one, getting the permit done and approved, there could be an appeal, people have the right to appeal. But if they do appeal and we end up having to do it next spring, then next spring would be our year one treatment. Confusing you sufficiently.
And again, if this, and again, if you find in year three or four, even four or five, where you need treatment, again, that would also cause you to have to come back and-
So the reason why you'd, why would you want the, the ninety-one thousand dollars, you'd want the ninety-one thousand dollars because if you, if you had year three and you said, okay, this, this treatment, you know, it lo, it looks like this didn't do it, we're going to need a treatment. We want to use the different herbicide and do it as in April. We'd have to either kind of come to DBW or one of you guys and see if, is there any, is there any kind of operating funding around? Or is there any funding, water quality funding we can come up with, can we come up with money so that we could do something in April and May? If we had the ninety-one thousand sitting there, we could draw from it, use a different herbicide in, before that June, you know, town meeting.
And as far as the timing, as far as the timing on, um, of doing it, in other words, if it's delayed because there isn't funding, there are setbacks associated with that, putting off six months to a year.
There, there could be. I mean, I, I think that, you know, what I've kind of said in my correspondences all through this is that I understand the constraints. I mean, you know, Parks and Rec are our best friends, so it's hard, really hard to come up here and, 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 and say, don't fund something that, that, who is our, our, really our, our partner there at Martins Pond for twenty years. So we, we are willing to accept the constraints that the budget provides. If, if, if it pleases the board to do the ninety-one, we will accept that. If it pleases the board to do the fifty-six, we'll work within that, and we will come back and report upon, you know, we'll give you the reports, every year's monitoring report. And maybe we would have to make a decision about funding more for this a little bit earlier than three years down the road.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Uh, before we go on, I've been reminded I didn't read the public hearing notice, so I'm going to do that. So there's a notice of, uh, notice of a budget informational hearing. The Northreading Board of Selectmen does hereby notify the residents of the town of Northreading that an informational hearing on the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget contained in the annual warrant will be held Monday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, eight P M, room fourteen, Town Hall. Interested residents will be given the opportunity to be heard, signed by the Board of Selectmen. Continue.
Yeah, thank you. Janet, is it conceivable that we do the treatment for the first two years, that in the third year, in the fourth year, they find that everything is fine? But then in the fifth year, it come back?
Yes.
So that would be-
By the time you do the monitoring, it, it all depends on how the monitoring goes too. So usually by the time you do the monitoring, it may or may not be too late to do it that year.
Mr. Schreit.
Mrs. Hilber.
I understand the dilemma in, in waiting for June town meeting, however, we also have a town meeting in October. So if you were to determine during the, I'm assuming, the cool months for, for milfoil, in October, you could request additional funds to continue the project through the following spring, and that way you would not miss an April deadline.
I didn't think of it.
Well, what you're talking about from a calendar statement, you're only talking through the four months between town meetings.
Yeah, the monitoring will likely be done by July and August, you know, but you don't, you don't treat in July and August. So you treat and then you check. And likely, if we do two years, you're going to check and then see if you think you're going to need to do it in, you know, what, did everything die back?
Any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so patient.
Michael, are you going to make a presentation?
I do have a presentation that's more about the discussions and the priorities at the level of the financial planning team. I'm happy to do it now, if you'd like me to do it now. It won't, most of it will not be relevant to this discussion, though, it will be-
Not this particular discussion.
Correct.
But the overall budget.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Yes, absolutely, yeah. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a brief presentation with regard to the fiscal year 2016 budget for the members of the public. Those of you who saw the presentation made at the February 28th departmental budget meeting, saw some of the high points in here, although it has been refined further as the financial planning team has proceeded through the budget process. Just a note on the goals that have governed financial planning here in the town, I think, for the past couple of years. Continuing conservative revenue assumptions, maintaining our critical reserves, creating long-term savings through labor contract negotiations, maintaining affordable health and insurance, continuing to develop alternative revenue sources, continued dedicated budget funding for the capital improvement program, and continued budget collaboration between the town and school leaders through the financial planning team, which, again, has meant monthly, at the least, for, throughout this FY 2016 budget process. Going through, as was previewed by the finance director at the last selectmen's meeting, when you look at our available revenues, revenue becomes applied as follows. Just over nineteen point five million dollars for our fixed costs, which includes employee benefits, debt service, and assessments by our regional schools, as well as property casualty insurance. The school department budget, projected at twenty-seven million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars, or forty-five percent of all revenue, and the general government budget at fourteen million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred forty dollars. Those numbers, the, the school revenues and the general government revenues, both include the offsets that were reviewed by the finance director for both the school budget and for the general government budget as part of the financial planning team's work. Again, just breaking down the split, sixty-six percent, thirty-four percent between the schools and general government for FY 2016. Looking at the revenue plan, just some highlights, again, the tax levy growth under two and a half, proposition two and a half, goes up to thirty-eight million, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, eighty-four dollars. There's been, you'll see the difference between the FY 2015 and 2016 new growth numbers. I believe the 2015 is an actual number, I looked to the finance director to confirm. We've done our best to evaluate permitting and other data to come up with a reasonable projection for four hundred five thousand dollars. I believe that's an increase of about eighty-five thousand dollars when compared to last year's budgeted new growth number. Can you confirm that number? So, we tried to get a more accurate number going into the budget process, and I thank the assessor for her efforts to try to give us as a reliable number as possible. We have the debt exclusion of six point two million dollars, just under six point three million dollars. Unrestricted state aid at one million, six hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. State aid for chapter seventy, six million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred two dollars. The state school building assistant board revenue, two hundred forty-three thousand. Our local receipts, which we have a projection for an increase of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. And then our other financing sources, which were adjusted by roughly eighty-six thousand Our current available funds, you can see them here, and they'll come up during the course of the Warren article review as well, but for free cash, we have just over one point one million dollars, just over two million in stabilization funds. Capital asset stabilization fund stands at seven hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. The water infrastructure stabilization fund, seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars, and I won't read the rest of them, but they're here for everyone to see. Key revenue adjustments that we've made for fiscal year 2016. First, the increase for the motor vehicle excise, and that was based on performance that we saw through the course of fiscal year 2015 and the commitment made as of February for fiscal year 2015. Penalties and interest, we decreased by five thousand dollars. Investment income projected to decrease by five thousand dollars. Cemetery revenue, based on trend, predicted, projected to be reduced by five thousand dollars. Receipts reserved for premium on the sale of bonds, a hundred thousand dollar increase. And enterprise fund indirect costs increased by eleven thousand, two hundred sixty-four Again, some of the identified expenditure drivers, our general liability insurance, projected to increase forty-four thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars. Capital improvements at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Our regional school assessment, that's both the Northeast Metropolitan Vocational School and the Essex North Shore Vocational School, at a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars. The commitment to put the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars aside for OPEP, as well as the snow removal reserve at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, key items that are driving our expenditures and available funds for town and school operations. With regard to health insurance, the present budget request is five million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars. Right now, our present year is five hundred forty-nine, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. We're projecting a zero percent increase for premiums for fiscal year 2016. We did a quick analysis of surrounding communities, and the increase appears to average out at six point zero six percent, which is about in line with the increase of the group insurance commission, which I believe is at five point six percent for fiscal year 2016, after plan design changes we put into effect. Cost, again, were compared with the present year subscriber enrollment and adjusted by a hundred thousand dollars for projected new employees between the town and the schools. And, again, we continue to have ongoing dialogue with our union to the employee insurance advisory committee on issues of health insurance matters. With regard to the department heads, a request by myself for the budget process related to the selectmen's portion of available revenues. Again, the goals we identified were reducing costs, improving operations and service delivery, creating a transparent budget document. Some of the programmatic changes, I won't go over them because I know they've all been reviewed in multiple forums in the past. And again, some slides, I've updated the slides to reflect the strategic, strategic planning, but there's six areas where I believe that the budget is aligned with the selectmen strategic planning exercise as approved in November by the board. Again, updated this to reflect some of the changes made after the February 13th issuance of the budget. And that's the end of the presentation, at least, for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Michael, you had the amount up there for, for snow, I'm assuming that's for deficit for this year?
Right, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the allowance for what we would be carrying over from fiscal year 15 this year into fiscal year 2016. The differential for the shortfall would be addressed in the article, I think it's Article Two of the town meeting on, in June, to fund the balance of the, the over.
That's coming out of the free cash number.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience have any questions?
Would that number be reduced, though, based on the FEMA declaring emergency for the first storm?
No, then, well, we, the, the budget practice has been to budget a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for snow.
Right.
And the budget. And to hold two hundred and fifty thousand above the line to help pay for it. In other words, not included in available funds.
I guess.
That's what that number is.
Thank you. That's next year's. In the first couple of slides, if you go to the, I go to the next one right here, that includes the additional money that we came up with to separate the, or to reduce the over.
That's correct. It's approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe, for the school department, and there's a sixty thousand dollar offset for the town from the solid waste stabilization fund. Those are in those two dollars. And for informational purposes, I know that the school committee was scheduled to take up the school department budget at a meeting this evening, and look forward to whether they've come to a final resolution on their end or not. Through you, Mr. Chairman. If there's no other questions, I just want to thank the department heads, many of them are in the audience tonight, if not all of them, for their efforts, and in particular, their patience in meeting with Liz and I over the past few months to address issues as they've come up. It's been a very educational process for me, and I really appreciate your efforts to contribute towards this. I know it's a lot of work on your part, so thank you.
Would have any specific questions? We've reviewed the town administrator's proposal, went down to, after I closed the hearing, making a decision on the additional money and the priorities. Mr. ...
I wanted to say a couple of words on the Parks and Rec before that gets closed out. I recognize the, the good work that's done by Parks and Rec. I also recognize that there is already a pretty substantial subsidy that's going to Parks and Rec, and frankly, I'm opposed to any additional subsidy, fifty-nine thousand specifically. There are other items that, like OPEP, that, that need to be funded and should be funded. We all have to live within our budgets. We can't spend more than, than, than we can afford to spend, and I think this is a case of Parks and Recs, that they've got to reevaluate what it is they're doing and trim back so that they can operate within the subsidy they're getting, which, which, unless and until that goes back to be a revolving fund, is going to be a problem with, with department revenue. But adding to it, I think, when we've got other things that are being either reduced or passed over, I, I think it's just not, not responsible. I think they've got to bring, bring back their programs and whatever the, whatever their expenses are, and Liz says they stay within their expense budget, but if they're not generating enough revenue, then their expense budget is too high, and they need to bring it back in line with, with their, with their programs can support. It's not popular view, I'm sure, but I think, I think it's something that I feel I needed to say, and I think that the board should consider that when they're deliberating how to allocate the balance of the funds that the TA is, that are available. With respect to the Mill Foil, I absolutely sympathize and agree that we need to do something there. My only question would be, why fund more than can be spent in the next twelve to eighteen months? I don't think you need to fund all of it out of a very tight budget this year. I would fund what you need to spend in, in that time period and make a commitment that we're going to have a, a recurring budget item to take care of and monitor and treat as necessary of the issues at, at Martin's Pond, but not, not tie up precious funds this year that, that we can't afford to tie up.
Maury?
Could you say if you were?
Absolutely. Why don't you come up here, because there's no microphone down here, Ren.
I understand what he's saying, keeping with the expenses, but honestly, the subsidy is three people. That's all it is, to be quite candid. It's three people's salary. It's the recreation director, the operations director, and the park director. So, those are the three positions we're asking for. We do everything we do under those three people. We pay for field maintenance people when Ipsut River Park was put on, and that's the year I started. The town funded it, they, they, they opened it up to the public, and now we take every inch of burden and every joy of it as well, to seed it, to tar it, to mow it, to buy things and what have you. And the same with the turf field that was gifted over. We take on that responsibility, there's very little revenue from that because the high school needs it, which they should. There's so much we do with three people, and that's all we're asking for, is the three salaries. We're taking on heavy burdens with benefits, insurance, credit card fees. We do stay within our budget, we do. We don't run programs that don't make money. We don't buy things that, we go up to many vendors to make sure we absolutely buy at the lowest cost you possibly could. We clip coupons, we get things for free, we get so many sponsors, and we're all asking for is the three salaries. So, that's, you know, I'm very passionate about it. I just think the three people, the three directors, they do a lot of work, and a lot more hours than at Thirty-Five gives. We're on weekends, we're on nights, we get calls all the time, and we don't complain about it, it's our job, we just want, we want the support. And a little support on the funding on just that one more additional, to get back where we were. You know, when that park came on, the town took it, and we're taking on the entire, the entire, the entire park and every little park that goes with it. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that it's three positions, that's what it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Maury.
Rita has something.
Oh, okay. Rita, sorry.
To add what Maury was saying, is the town of Parks and Recreation also pays for the parks foreman, and I think sometimes we get confused when they talk about the recreation director, saying, should we have that position? We could ask for the recreation director, or we could ask you to pay for the parks foreman. There's a nine thousand dollar difference. But when they say that we can readjust our programs, we can't. We have had to re-add more programs to pay for what we lost back in 2008. And I, I think the, the thing that we just find, no matter how we say it, and I think when we said it last time, everybody seemed to understand what we were talking about. In 2008, every department in town, in the schools, have added people back, and we keep getting passed over and passed over. We get passed over because we do an excellent job as volunteers and friends and everything else building on the, the program. And we're saying, all those things shouldn't have to pay for this, this person. The recreation director raises enough money to cover all the programs. That department makes, raises, makes a profit. The parks foreman is paid for by the town. The parks director is paid for by the town. The operations director is paid for the town. Recreation pays for the heavy special equipment operator we have. He does plowing for the town, for recreation and the town, when he's on duty. Recreation also has picked up helping the department, not just the volunteers, but the department workers, the staff, has picked up helping out on the CIT, which everybody agrees is great. We did that with the school, with the police, and the fire. So, it put an extra burden on everybody, but it did everything much better for the town to help in what this community, community impact game is supposed to do. Recreation has helped with the elder services. We've done some extra things that we're doing for them that they couldn't afford to do before, and then we're helping them. We help the DPW because we pay for the special heavy equipment operator that also can work for DPW and does plowing. We do pay for the irrigation in town that everybody in town is able to use any field. So, Recreation, again, should we have to raise money to bring money in to pay for the irrigation and the seeding that everybody in town uses, all the fields? We understand Little League is used ninety-nine percent by Little League. Ipsut River Park is used by everybody. Mullen Park is used by everybody. Maguire Field is used by everybody. Kids' Spot is used by everybody. We mow ninety-three acres. If we didn't have a league in town, we still have to do ninety-three acres. If we didn't charge a dime and we didn't let the leagues come on, Recreation and DPW and Parks have to raise money, because we do it, again, through some volunteer things, to raise money for the fields. The six thousand, two hours we had, we said for permitting, we had to do more permitting. We have to allow more people to use the fields so we can raise more money to pay for the heavy equipment operator or the recreation director, whichever way you want to look at it. The scheduling we do, the other personnel we use in the schools and the towns. We do a lot of things for the schools, taking care of their fields, when they, they use recreation fields all the time, causes more work, more problems in the field. We have to do all that for the schools, because the schools in turn help us with other things. Should we charge the schools more money? And if we do, then they're going to come back to you and ask for more money in their budget. So, we're trying to make it simple. Please give us the money in our budget, because we do do an awful lot for the schools also. If you look back at the things we, who are we? We showed you what we were, you showed, we showed you what we do. We showed you the amount of volunteer hours that we have to do to raise the money to do it. I do not understand, since 2008 to now, that most of the school and many of the town has added more people because you realize there's more work done, and we come up year after year after year and keep asking for it. It just, it, it just, I don't get it. I don't get it. I thought last time we did a great presentation showing it to you, and everybody keeps saying, well, you can raise more money. No, we can't. You can cut some of your programs back. No, you can't. You've got a quality of life in town, just like the schools. Why have you added the extra, you know, science labs and things to school? Because you need it. Why have we added the extra quality of life in town? Why have we added the extra quality of life things in town? Because we need it. We're not just a department that can continue to get cut down because you assume the volunteer is going to do it. To ask for the extra position, I think it's insane that we can't get that money for that position. I think we've done, as much as we can show you that in the two thousand eight, when the department got cut, that we have never got the money put back and everybody else has. I'm asking you, please, to think a little harder and longer on it, and please consider it. I don't think it continually should be that volunteers have to raise more money to put in the budget to do the things we do for the entire town. And to think there's any way in our budget that anybody, any of the, I'll say, every one of you can come look at our program, sit with our rec director, and sit with our parks director, and find students, they can find a better way to do what we're doing, great. But I'll bet my salary in town, not here, because it's volunteer. My salary that I make. But nobody's going to find a better way to do what we're doing right now. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Rita, can I ask you a question? If you don't have the answer, maybe one of your team members can come up. You mentioned the schools that your presentation initially you gave us during the budget session, and you mentioned it again tonight. Can you just explain to me just briefly, what fields and how much use our school programs use our fields? Because we don't get any revenue. If we let La Crosse go down Ipsut River Park?
Right. Everybody uses the fields. The school continues to call every time there's a rain problem. The past four years, and Marty can explain what fields we use, the past four years especially with the building of the new schools and shutting down the fields. Rec is the one that took that for four years. If there's rain here, the school doesn't play on their fields, they come and use ours. Marty can explain.
Basically, when I took over as director, there was a problem with the school issues because we use the fields, school fields, as well. So when I started, we really, there wasn't much involvement with us taking care of the school fields, but we have an obligation to because we get user fees from youth leagues. So we right now take care of the wood school field. I just did the high school baseball field. You know, we do the carey park, and we do the little school through summer because schools are out of session, and we rent it out to youth softball. So the responsibility's gone tenfold. I try to collaborate with the school. We try to work together. You know, we share equipment. We just try to cooperate that way. That was never the case before. But there's definitely a lot more burden on our fields with the construction. And the problem is, is then you get the complaints from everybody in town of conditioning of the fields when they're getting overused. But they're getting overused because we need to make the revenue.
But the issue, reason I'm bringing it up is because if youth softball uses our Ipsut River Park, they pay user fee. That user fee goes towards reinvesting in the field, the quality of the field.
Correct.
But if La Crosse, high school La Crosse goes down and uses that field, we don't have a revenue to pay for that maintenance of the use of that field.
No, we don't get zero, we get zero revenue from these schools.
So, and I think that's one of the things that I think everyone has to understand, is that you want to say, make them self-sufficient, but everybody that's using our fields and our parks are not paying for the maintenance and the upkeep. So it is, our schools are getting a service, and they should. We should not be charging them to use those fields. But that's one of the reasons why we need this money, so they can continue to keep doing those things where they can't raise the money on those fields, because we have a school function going on those fields at that time. And we don't want to start getting to the point where we're kicking off our school events so they can go raise money to pay their bills. That isn't going to be good.
Yeah, and what I saw, I mean, people have the wrong perception about the Kenny Field. The school has priority. So they have the majority of the use, the majority of hours. So people drive by and see, you know, it's always busy. The snow ops, there's people on it. But it's school mostly, it's school use.
And any income from that you don't get either, right? If they have a gate fee, you don't get any of that gate fee?
No. And if there's a, you know, a weather issue and there's conflict and there's changes in the schedule, we get bumped, no matter where it is, just because the school has priority. And that just happens.
Absolutely, rightfully so.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
I was, before Rita got up, I was leaning towards saying, hey, you know, our goal was, and it's been a goal for a few years, is to make recreation self-sufficient. But Rita said something interesting, and that was that, and I hadn't thought about this before, is that the entire community makes use of the park, whether it's just for jogging, or having a picnic, or maybe kayaking when the river is up. And therefore, the, at least my thought before was that we had all these programs and they should be paying for themselves, and they shouldn't be coming out of the town budget. So at this point, I've changed my mind, based on just a few words that Rita said.
But also keep in mind that the amount of time the schools use all those fields. But you can't create revenue at those times, Bob. And that's an issue you have to take into account.
Well, I understand that. So I guess what I'd recommend to the board at this point is that we fund what recreation has asked for, and we fund the three-year program for the mountains pond, and we take a hard look going forward as to just how we should appropriate and fund recreation or not. And with respect to the DOR issue, well, so we go forward and do it one year, we get yelled at. In the meantime, we go file legislation to change the rules as far as revolving fund goes.
I think we should do that anyway, because that's what we are.
Yeah. That's what I would propose at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Well, all I wanted to add, I just wanted to explain really briefly to my finance that I just want to be really clear that we do not want one single program that doesn't make a profit. I want you to understand that. And we literally, like, we literally this week have turned away brand-new residents in town that we fought to get by doing our marketing program, and they come in and they register, and we have to turn them away because we didn't get enough residents for the class to run, to be able to afford to pay the instructor. So we literally turned away residents, and they're brand-new residents that it kills us to turn them away. And we have to do it, because we can't afford to run that class unless we get enough kids to pay the instructor. So we literally run absolutely nothing unless we're at a profit and we can pay the instructor. And I just want that to be really clear, because that's how tight we sit for our budget. We don't want a single program that does not cover all expenses and make a profit. I just wanted to explain that.
They're not covering all expenses.
No, we are. Recreation is completely covering.
There would be an forty thousand dollar subsidy.
Recreation is completely covering every single expense on the recreation side, every single solitary expense on the recreation side we're covering. We have never run anything at a loss. We pay for every instructor, every single material we buy. We get sponsors, and we don't want any, not one single program that I run that has not made a profit, not one. And I'm just reassuring you that. The other expenses are things like, like the parks side, that, you know, we are running parks and have to maintain parks, but we do not run programs as far as programming goes. And you can come and look at all of our books. I don't want a single program that has not made a profit. It might not be a big profit, and there lies our problem. You know, I might make just enough to cover the instructor, and maybe a fifty-dollar profit, which does not make for a great business, but at least it finds a program, gets the community out, doing the things that we want to offer to them, but it doesn't necessarily make a high profit. We're not getting the numbers of people we need in our programs to make big profits, but we never, ever run, ever lots, ever. But I just wanted that to be clear, because it comes up year after year, and it's really heartbreaking for us to do work so hard to do what we do and not ever run in the red, ever, even with a single program. So I just want you to understand that, and we have to come over and take a look at what we do, and we are budgeted, because we don't want anything canceled. And we canceled several this week, because they want to be in the middle to cover the box. Okay?
Don, I think if recreation ran no programs and the staff went away altogether, it would still cost us that amount of money and more, just to maintain the facilities.
A hundred.
So, I think, yeah, we do have a problem associated with enterprise versus revolving fund, but, you know, I'd rather get spanked for not following the rules and get it fixed, rather than say that's a good reason not to fund it at this point.
My only point, Bob, is that we've got very tight budgets, we have things out of the budgets, and look at it as one. I just have a problem with it. And I started off saying, I appreciate all the good stuff you guys do. I think it's wonderful. I wish we could do everything and more.
But we've been here and that's a lot here, and it's hard to be.
And let's cut the budgets. We'll go through, put them all on the table.
Mr. Yu.
Yes. Question on the school fields. The parks is now maintaining those fields? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, not at all.
Well, it's certain school, yes.
At certain school. I was, I, it appeared that you were saying they were doing all the schools.
Basically, like you said, I work in conjunction with the school department. They have a very small crew design, so we work together. So basically, yeah.
No, I understand that.
Like the, not the front of the bachelor school, but the sports fields, the sports fields.
Right, that's what I'm referring, you have the hood, you have the field.
The football field, yeah.
Right. You obviously have the high school field. Are you maintaining the football field?
Yeah, we have.
And you still have the other?
We carry that with no house in school.
Okay, and then you have the, to come, the softball fields? The softball fields?
The newer one, the proposed one.
To come, the proposed softball fields?
No.
The proposed ones for the new school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I probably won't leave them off.
Okay. So I guess.
Not yet. The three softball fields, the little school.
Right, and they had the little school. I guess the question then is, I don't know when you started working together, and I'm not saying that's a good or bad idea, but if those responsibilities were left up to the schools, it's their property, it's their field, their fields, do you have an idea what savings that would have for you, for the Parks and Rec, if the schools were responsible for their own fields?
I don't understand your question. I mean, savings, if we make the work still be done.
I understand that, but we're talking about, from an accounting perspective, from an accounting perspective, if, I realize the work will have to be done, but Parks and Rec is absorbing.
It's just labor, it's work.
Okay. So if you did not have to do the hood school, if you did not have to do the little school, if you did not have to do those schools, that would be an expense you would not have.
But we have to, because the leagues require.
The leagues pay user fees to.
I understand that, I understand that. I understand that, but I'm not, I'm not making any suggestions, see, I'm just trying to understand something here, that if the cost for maintaining the fields, all right, well, by, that of the school system, all right, would you realize a savings in that?
No, the schools would charge us. The schools would charge us for maintaining.
Is that what happened before? You know?
It's always been a collaboration.
Or it just wouldn't be done. I mean.
Right, the conditions of the fields, there was a point in time where the conditions of the fields were not necessarily acceptable, were not necessarily acceptable.
I kind of thought that.
And conducive to renting them out and generating revenue to help support programs.
I kind of thought that would be an answer, to be honest with you.
What was fine was Parks and Rec stepped forward in collaboration with the school department, in collaboration with the Hillview in relation to the turf field, where Hillview, again, the school department gave it up, put it under the enterprise, the enterprise then contracted with the Parks and Rec to handle it, with giving the schools priorities. But what was happening before is the conditions of the fields were such poor state of disrepair that they weren't really usable, that were not marketable.
I played on.
Right, and so what's, but what happened was Parks and Recreation have taken it over, the conditions have significantly been improved and are now marketable, generating some revenue.
And I do, I work with the school, we share equipment, which I think is a huge benefit to the town, because the equipment's expensive. You know, we maintain, there's another, we maintain all of our equipment. We maintain in-house, we do all that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So there's no line item or budget item to show how much of your cost of maintaining those fields of the schools versus that of Parks and Rec, okay? There's no way for you, currently no way for you to show that?
No, because I only, I only have two guys.
That doesn't matter.
It doesn't, in fact, it would be a savings. We pay for that one guy, so there wouldn't be, that's really suggestive, that if we didn't take care of the schools, then we could relieve a position that we have, a special equipment operator. That would be, that's an expense that you could see, but we still need that person to take care of. At least.
I'm not arguing against or for what's before us right now. I'm looking to understand something. I personally think that the numbers, when you ask for, when any department asks for some money, they have to be able to justify that money. And they have to be able to show where those costs are. So if you came before the board and showed that, listen, we do the schools, and it costs us this much money to do the school, or the parks, the parks relative to the school, related to the schools, it costs us this kind of money, all right, and we only get this much revenue on it because when they use our fields, we don't charge them. So there should be some type of an accounting that we could see, so we can understand that number. You might be selling yourself short at this point. I don't know.
They could charge us for the use of the fields, as we could charge them for the taking care of the fields, so it's a.
Right, but you show a paper transaction of some sorts to show the cost that you're bearing. Otherwise, people need to understand what you're up against. And by, we're really in a position of accepting your word that you have this issue, because the numbers aren't being reflected in any accounting.
No, I think we're missing the point. The point is, we have a lot of town-owned land, parkland, parks, that we maintain, that are under their responsibility, that we have to give the schools first priority to go and use, which is wonderful, and I support that. We should be doing it. What you're not understanding is, we keep saying, or some people keep saying, they need to be self-sufficient. But the problem is, you can't tell them they can be self-sufficient, because they have to give the priority to the schools so they can use Ipsut River Park, so they can use the turf field. Rightfully so. They can't create any revenue at those times. That makes it very difficult. So for them to achieve what you want them to do, we're going to have to turn around and tell our schools, you can't use the turf field anymore when you want, and you can't use Ipsut River Park, because we need to go out and get those sold to someone else so we can have revenue. What do we just do to ourselves? That's, there's no spirit of cooperation there.
The other issue is participation. We don't know each year what the numbers are going to be for certain groups, like, you know, it goes up and down in trends, but Little League this year is way down. We can't control that, and that's how we get our, we generate our revenue.
Glenn, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Yeah, but you need to show that, that's all. You can, every year you could show that. You can show what your costs are and what they are. That's all I'm saying. I'm not suggesting, okay, that, and Mike, I hope you're not misunderstanding me, I'm not suggesting, addressing the self-sufficient issue, okay? And I'm not suggesting that you, that you charge the school or the school charge you. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about putting it on paper, looking at what you have, all right, looking at what you're up against every year, develop a history, and then present that to us, so we understand that the fifty-nine thousand dollars that you're asking for makes sense.
But we have, and my point all along has been, whether you have thousand kids playing, two thousand kids, or five hundred, it's town-owned property, and it has to be taken care of. That's all I'm saying. So the numbers, I mean, of the groups and what we get in revenue, which we can't control for youth groups, we can show you which we have every year, but again, whether there's five hundred, two hundred, the work's still going to be done, or else who would do it? It's town-owned property. We're just going to let it go?
We do issue a permit to the school every time they request it, any time on the fields, just because it's also for calendar purposes, so if somebody says there's something going on here, I can say yes or no. So it's a no-charge permit, and, you know, that's part of the six thousand and two hours that I depicted on there. And Marty brought to one of his meetings, the meeting that he goes to with the schools, that, you know, these are the amount of permits we give you, even at Ipsut River Park, for this, and for this, and for that, and for this. And that's how he sits in collaboration with him, with them. It's a great collaboration with schools, and things are getting done, things are looking good, and it's kind of a quick pro quo. We feel it's even and optimal, because they could charge us and we could charge them, and we feel it's very, you know, even enough for what we do. We know we can't have the schools, when we want them to rent out the turf field, because it's for the children. It's, you know, the children of the schools should get first priority for this once, because that's the way it is. And we have a priority listing. School is first, youth league's is second, adult leagues, you know, we have a priority listing, so we make sure that it's adhered to. I mean, I could probably print out all the. I mean, I could probably print out all the permits the school needs, and figure out how many hours that is, so that might be an answer.
Just one more thing, and then I'll, I'll.
Sure.
Be quiet. If you have one of those permits, and you have an option, you can either give it to the school or you can give it to some private youth, youth program, okay, or athletic program, all right? They're offering you, you have a fee of what it costs, or what you're gonna, what you're gonna charge them. And you put them side by side, just say it's a hundred dollar fee, just for argument's sake. And the school uses it, you just lost a hundred dollars. Okay, and I'm just looking to see that, that, that's basically. So, when you see that, and you see a multitude of programs, that you had opportunities to use private sports organizations, you've shown, you can show, I lost fifty thousand dollars this year. Not that you, you don't wanna, not that you can do anything about it because it's our schools and they have the right to use it, but then we see it, okay, and then, and then it makes, it makes sense at that point, and that's, that's all I'm really saying.
Sure, the permits would actually, you know, I could, I could put them down to zero, but I could certainly pull them all out and determine how many hours and what it's worth. Would I always get a rental for that? Not always, you know, it depends upon the time and what happens, but for the most part, it's, you know, it's a school-driven thing, we're not complaining about this, this whole thing.
Right, I understand.
Mr. O'Leary. There's no doubt, a few years back, that because of the revenues that are being generated, or were generated and still being generated, and the reserves that were being built up, that Parks and Recreation, lack of a better term, being punished for their success. And, you know, as a result, we on this side of the table, over the last few years, have continued to push them and encourage them, you know, with their fundraising activities and the zeal that they approach, their passion, zeal, that they approach, their mission that they have, continuing the success. My concern has been over the last few years, is again, it seems to be the same group of people, much like myself, and it's aging, and it's, you know, there isn't much of a family coming up in order to sustain this. In the meantime, you know, really, you could vouch for this, you remember when, when our parents started running programs like the Little League and stuff, I mean, there were six teams, and there's a, you know, a five-week schedule, and there were cuts, and that was it. There was no soccer, there was no lacrosse, there was no, none of these programs. So, there was the Little League field with one or maybe two fields down there, and then there was no Ipsa River Park, there was no Rita Muller Field, that was part of the, going to San over there. There was, you know, the Chester Street Field was the dump, you know. There weren't all these facilities and quality of life things that have been created over the last, you know, thirty years or forty years, that have certainly enhanced the quality of life in North Reading. Parks and Recreation have taken on the burden of supporting these things, maintaining the programs and maintaining the fields themselves. There's no doubt that there is a, a set cost associated with maintaining these fields, whether we run programs or we don't, to Marty's point, you know, we have to maintain them anyway, whether we rent them out or don't rent them out. The schools have been able to benefit, I mean, there was no school behind the hood, there was no field behind the hood school, there was no school, no field at the, at the little school, none of those fields existed. You know, there was some, when the middle school was built, yeah, they built a couple of fields up there, which weren't in very good shape ever. But, you know, so we've taken on so much, and, and the Parks and Rec have taken on the burden of supporting that. But it isn't self-sufficient, and it never really has been. We have been subsidizing, to Don's point, you know, to two hundred and forty thousand dollars last year. But the cost to maintain those fields, with or without the revenue being generated, I believe, and I can't quantify it truly, you know, certainly exceeds a hundred and forty thousand dollars to do so. So, you know, like I said, I was talking about phasing it in, at some point, you know, phasing in, covering more of the cost in order to do it, and, you know, get, like you said, you know, take the spanking and slap on the wrist as far as, call it what you want, but it's a revolving fund. And again, allow them to operate appropriately, allow them to maintain the fields. We should be subsidizing it to the point that we cover our costs of maintaining those fields, and the rest of it is to support the programs. If the programs aren't successful, then it isn't going to, to fund it. But, you know, while your programs cover the cost of that program, it doesn't cover your salary or your salary or Rita's big salary.
Well, it covers my salary.
You know, but it's a-
But we're still covered, so it does cover it.
But, okay, but it doesn't cover it all. So, to me, you know, you've done your man's work, it's come to a breaking point where we can't maintain the programs and raise the revenues necessary to support the quality of life in North Reading, and, you know, what has to give? To me, it's, we have to give back now and actually quantify it and cover the costs associated with maintaining those fields. And the Parks and, I mean, we have passive recreation areas that don't necessarily generate a lot of income, but again, add to the quality of life in North Reading, and we can't just let them go to seed, so to speak. So, you know, we're gonna have to do something to assist in subsidizing it, whether it's the full amount or partial amount, you know, something more has to give, and, you know, OPEB, yes, we have to attack it. But, you know, what we're attacking it with is of no consequence, other than a gesture on our part to address a situation that isn't gonna be solved in the next twenty years. You know, so if something has to give, so if something has to give in that particular respect, then.
I'd like to comment on the OPEB.
Yep.
We, as a board, discussed a program that would allow us to get into it and made a lot of sense from the point of view of funding new employees.
That's what I suggested, was we stop the bleeding.
Right, and the number that town administrator came up with after looking at that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was probably a little too big a bite call in one year.
Right.
And similar to what we're doing with the capital planning, is we're allocating twenty-five thousand dollars a year more, right? So, you know, I think that, you know, we should set the goal for the FY two thousand and seventeen budget to bring that OPEB number up to the two fifty, or maybe in two steps, and get that out of the way. I think we're getting a bargain from Recreation, to be quite frank, and I hadn't looked at it quite that way until what I said earlier, the comment that Rita made, is we're getting essentially a big, a great deal in maintaining our property, and we've overlooked that, we've really overlooked that. And we haven't overlooked the property, we've overlooked, the fact that it's getting done, is we've overlooked the fact that it's getting done, and it's, it's, it's a big, it's a great deal.
In the service to the community.
It's a great deal.
You've been in the national lineup, you see, that couldn't be done without their service.
Right, so, from that perspective, at this point, I've changed my mind, I've gone a hundred and eighty degrees in, in a matter of few minutes, right? But I, I strongly feel, I strongly feel that we should support the Recreation request. We should put in the balance of the money to support the Martin's Pond for the three years with, with the commitment that if, in fact, more is needed, that we will find a way of funding it in a future year. And as someone brought up, it could be funded in October instead of June, which would allow test results to come in, and whether or not a need is developed to have the springtime treatment the following spring.
Just to clarify your milfoil.
Yes.
Because Janice, Janice brought up that two years of treatment in five years of management would be fifty-five thousand bucks.
Yeah, fifty-six, yeah.
Are you supporting that, or do you want to do a three-year treatment?
No, I'm supporting that.
Okay.
That, that would be my recommendation to the board, topics for discussion.
That's what I support, is a five-year management, monitoring, and the two years of treatment.
Two-year treatment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor, I told you, my position hasn't necessarily changed, but to compromise, I'm not gonna throw the baby out with the bathwater either, I think that, you know, the fifty-six thousand dollars is, is necessary, as is the ninety-one, so I'm in support of that too. If the majority board's gonna go with the fifty-six thousand dollars, I'm sure they'd be happy to accept it, as Janet pointed out.
Yeah, she'd be fine with it.
Happy with any commitment we make.
So, someone wanna make a motion, or we still wanna discuss this?
No, what's the town administrator need to find his direction?
I'm thinking some sort of, there's clearly consensus, the intention here is to fund the Recreation request and fund the, the partial request, Miss McColson identified. That would leave us a delta of about seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, and I just had a quick side conversation with the finance director, and it's likely that based on the vacancy factor and the timing of hiring in the Finance Department, we could achieve that by making a reduction in the Finance Department salaries. And what we would do is go forward and make those adjustments and finalize the budget to be fully accounted out.
So, what is the figure for Martin's Pond, fifty-six, whatever?
I came up with fifty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, we've got the-
When you deduct the ninety-five hundred bucks that they're throwing in. That gives you fi- five years of monitoring for twenty-six eight.
No, no, I'm just looking for the number that Janet gave.
So, selectmen, the point that Miss McColson made, the fifty-six two-two-five that she outlined is actually high? It's not the right number?
Correct.
Okay.
Based on the number she gave, because she said first year of treatment was twenty-two thousand five hundred, second year of treatment was sixteen thousand one twenty-five. You take those two together, and you add it to the twenty-six eight hundred, I come up with sixty-five thousand four twenty-five, minus the ninety-five hundred they're going to kick in, I come up with fifty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Then you throw the fifty-nine and change on top of that. Finance Director.
I just wanna make note that even though we're discussing the operating budget right now, this will be funded in the warrant as a separate article through raising appropriate funds.
Yes.
For the milfoil.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, and as far as the additional twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars bonded for the other piece of equipment, use it, use it appropriately for capital improvement plan, probably belonged in the first place, and then, where's your-
Do we need a motion, though? I don't know if we necessarily need a motion, I think we have.
We're gonna approve the whole budget.
Yeah, we're gonna approve the budget base.
Fifty-six, fifty-six thousand two twenty-five. To me, you know, as far as the ninety-five hundred dollars, it's gonna be available, again, same thing, twenty, a committee of twenty-three years that's been raising money separately, to me, I think we should come up with a fifty-six, two, two-two-five, I don't know what you have for Michael.
Fifty-five nine twenty-five, which is fine, I don't, either way.
Fifty-six two-two-five, and then.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking to the finance director to confirm, but I don't believe we're going to have any statutory obligations of all of the budget tonight, perhaps we can handle the same or any of the capital budget, if all of the warrant is on, you know, final form. Excellent. So, we'll prepare it like we're gonna do with the capital budget, put it in a final form.
And approve it, that's Monday night.
Okay, so again, I was suggesting.
We have a consensus on this?
Fifty-six two-two-five?
I get, yeah, I came up with fifty-five nine twenty-five, but I'm not gonna argue for a couple hundred bucks.
Just go with what she had said, just.
Yeah, go with what she said.
Fifty-six two-two-five.
Okay.
And then additionally, Parks and Rec.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine and-
Five eighty-seven.
Five eighty-seven.
Okay, at this point.
So, we're gonna do Article One now?
I will close the, close the public hearing, we're not doing a public hearing in the warrant articles, are we?
Any other? She closed it.
Yeah, I closed the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, anyone here for public comment?
Thank you.
Someone in the back, someone raising it.
Yes, public comment?
Yes.
Hold it, hold it.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps we could just give the department heads a moment to leave, I think that their business here is complete at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, is there some warrant articles you need them to stay for?
At the moment, I don't think so, my intention was if there were specific questions that required department head, we'd have them come back next week.
Okay.
We're better off in the dark.
No. Chief, could you grab that light? Thank you.
Will we all sit out back there? Name and address.
Thank you, Rebecca McCulsky, one fifty Central Street. So, I, like many other residents on Central Street, last week got a letter in the mail notifying us about a project that's underway to resurface, repave, redo the road, which is fantastic. But I was reading it and placed a call into the town to see what considerations have been made as part of this project to also consider sidewalk development as part of that. Something I'd been, you know, thinking about since I've lived on Central Street for twelve-plus years. I have three children, it's obviously an extremely dangerous road anyhow. So, when I saw that the town was investing in this project, I thought, oh my gosh, this is fantastic, finally, they've realized that there is a huge need for a sidewalk, and clearly, it would make sense to do it during the course of this project. Come to find out, that doesn't seem to be the case. So, I posted something on Facebook, I don't know if anyone here is aware, that there's a, a Facebook page for residents of North Reading. There's more than eight hundred members, very active participants, and within an hour, I had fifty different responses from folks completely supportive of the idea of whatever it takes to put this concern on the table. So, I have no idea what the formality of this process takes, but I'm here to at least raise the dialogue, start the conversation, and see, see what the process looks like, to have that be considered formally.
We have a DPW director here.
Just for your comment.
Would you like to comment first?
Certainly, so Rebecca, I know you contacted my office, and I spoke with Karen, and you and Mr. Carnavale spoke as well with regards to the concern.
Correct, Mr. Carnavale.
He's here in the, in the audience, and he and I did have a discussion this afternoon with regards to this, and it's a situation where the Central Street project is one that's been long, long in the making, and probably long overdue, with regard to it, but I do know that he has some information that it might be useful, that I think he may have shared with you regarding the costs and what it would take. Just a note with regard to, to that, well, I guess I should defer to Mr. Carnavale first, could you perhaps just go over the numbers associated with the project? If you could also speak to the prep work that's been done by the water department, et cetera.
As part of the Central Street project, the town engineer has had a contractor design sidewalks from, on Central Street, from Park Street all the way to the Andover Line. When we got the design done, you look at which way you would put it, the left side or the right side, heading north, and the right side tends to be the best side to do it, because there's telephone poles on the other side. The estimated cost, unfortunately, to do it is in the order of four hundred thousand dollars for that one-point-five-mile stretch. So, that's why that's not included as part of the use of the Chapter ninety and the town road money. But, talking to Rebecca today, what drives up the cost frankly is, is trees there, there's ledge, and people have put various man-made things in the way we'd have to move. So, we discussed perhaps working together to get those things moved at hopefully no expense to the town or limited expense to the town to free up the right-of-way so we can put the sidewalk down. Because typically, over half that cost is removing the stuff that's in the way. So, we have a design, we have interested neighbors, and it's gonna be a long-term project. We've done everything underground, we fixed all the water main, installed hydrants, moved the drainage, so everything's ready to put in a sidewalk, just the cost of physically removing the stuff and putting the sidewalk in is the next phase.
So, just one point, which was my first question when I heard of the request, but it appears that we do, for the most part, have possession of the right-of-way to fit a sidewalk on the road, because, I mean, the road is certainly a very narrow road.
I, I believe there will be no takeings, I'd have to confirm with the map, but I know it wasn't an issue, because the road's relatively narrow to start with, and we don't intend to widen the road. I mean, Joe, you know this, but once you pave a road, people drive faster, so we're not gonna, we're gonna leave it twenty-two, maybe twenty-four feet wide, we're not going any wider.
Maybe fourteen feet, maybe twenty, you don't need more than twelve feet per lane.
Right, so, obviously widening, people go faster, just mentally, if it's narrow, or just like the road going up to the high school, people tend to slow down, from what I've been told.
Which you're gonna have that problem anyway, based on the fact that it's a newly paved road, and you don't have the, you know, the potholes acting as speed bumps.
Dick, the, with respect to the items that are in the right-of-way, what kind of items are there? That we have to, the residents-
Large trees, there's actually existing ledge, rocks, people have built rock walls and things like that. It's just what you normally would expect, and there's a cost to physically move that stuff or remove the trees. And that adds up, that's a significant cost.
I don't drive up and down that street, but maybe once or twice a year. Is there, are there people that park on what might be where sidewalks would be placed?
No, no, there's mostly man-made stone walls, a lot of people have put walls for planting areas.
So, there's not necessarily parking on the road?
It's not wide enough.
No.
The car would get hit.
Oh, no, I was thinking of parking by the fact that right now, there's no sidewalk, they drive up on the dirt or whatever's there.
Not really.
No, no.
So, the, the design of the, this sidewalk, is it granite curving, or is it asphalt burn? What was your vision of it?
Asphalt burn, sloped asphalt burn.
What, what are the, so we had, we had looked at, uh, over the course of the years, um, several different instances, one, we had forty-B projects going in there, uh, we were trying to get, uh, the one at, uh, sixty-one Central Street, or whatever it is. They were, we were trying to get them to, uh, to put in the sidewalk from their project down to sixty-two. We had money approved for the one on Pilgrim Road to put between Pilgrim Road and Spruce Road. Uh, money was actually appropriated as part of that project, but then it was diverted into something else because what happens is again, if the town goes to tackle it, uh, there are different sta- there's a certain standard that has to be made, you know, met in order for the town to, to tackle it. If you're gonna have a private contractor to it, it'd be different. The first section of road, some major mature trees, uh, would really alter the landscape in front of several of those homes and those homeowners, and I believe there were going to be some sort of, uh, takings or right of ways that would have to be allowed from some of the residents in order to put that sidewalk in.
If we, if we don't, if we don't take the trees.
On the eastally side, on the eastally side of, of Central Street.
Right.
Um, for that first section from Park Street up, but some very large mature trees there, which, uh, neighbors were concerned about, they've enjoyed the shade from all these years, and also protected their properties from automobiles ending up in their front yard or their front porch, uh, front steps. So it's been looked at over the years, but it's just the topography is, uh, so I'm surprised that it only came in at four hundred fifty thousand dollars, so I think that figure was, was, has been around for a long time, but, um, I'm heartened to hear that that's all it is. But I believe that we're gonna be some takings involved.
Well, if, if we don't, if we, our thought was straight shot, but, um, I've lived in other communities and they did it in a phased project where they would remove stuff, they would sometimes leave the tree and have an agreement with the homeowner to go on their property.
Right.
Shot with like a gravel sidewalk, just to get a sidewalk, and then we have money to pave it, so this sounds like a candidate for that kind of phased approach.
Right, yeah, but, uh, some of these, uh, again, some of these homes are closer to the road than others, and all of a sudden, you've got this sidewalk that's halfway between the tree and their front door, you know, so. I mean, there's a whole host of issues because the, the neighbors were approached during the phase end of that forty-B project to try and get that, because one of the goals during the forty-B subcommittee thing was to get some off-site improvements. Um, and two of them that were going on Central Street, we're looking to do it because it's dangerous as it is, and if you could just get some.
There's one in the books, but for some reason, they only collected eight thousand dollars that Central had parked that, I don't know what it is, up three or four places on the right-hand side, uh, I don't know if it's assisted living or what it is, but eight thousand dollars is a hundred feet of sidewalk, that's all it is.
Again, it was negotiated out of the, the deal because it wasn't feasible, so they're gonna just make a contribution to the sidewalk fund, I believe. Um, but just going back to something that we had done years ago when the first cell tower went in, the cell tower revenue was supposed to be devoted to sidewalk maintenance, repair, and expansion, and, uh, we certainly got away from that. Because it was found money, it was a need back then, and it hasn't gone away, just the, the need for the revenue in order to maintain services, uh, superseded the program.
Does it cost less to put a sidewalk in while you're doing the road, or in this case, it doesn't matter? You're actually not building a new road, you're removing the hot top, leveling it.
There's not much savings. For the most part, we've moved everything, you have to move the big cost stuff on the road, what we've done, we would be removing where it has to be removed, put in a curb, and backfill gravel or asphalt. So it's, it's relatively less intrusive than we're gonna be tearing up all the asphalt, roughly speaking.
But the first project on Central Street is a, uh, is a over fifty-five, it's not a sister, it's an over fifty-five, affordable, twenty-five percent of the units are affordable, and again, we were trying to get them to pay for the cost of bringing it down to Park Street, but, um, neighbor opposition, uh, opposition because of the removal of the trees primarily. And, and they were, again, they're very mature trees, and again, trying to work around it, get around them, then you'd need permission or easement from the property owners to go around the tree rather than take the tree out, and, uh, we couldn't get a consensus all the way down, couldn't get everybody to sign off on it.
Well, I mean, neighbors change.
No, no, neighbors changed.
How long ago was that?
Um.
For my time.
Eight years, no, probably eight years ago. I think time flies, but.
Oh, it's, I mean, it's a long public involvement process, and you're right, there's always gonna be a roadblock, and maybe you build up to that point and you don't build it.
Don't get me wrong, I was trying to advocate to get it done, but, uh, it was difficult to get a consensus to get the project allowed and embraced by the neighborhood. Talk about taking away their trees and things.
Well, I mean, we did a similar job on Upper, um, Swamp Pond Road, the neighbors wanted it widened for public safety and, and involved taking down things on their property they didn't want to have taken down, so we worked with them to come up with a consensus, so we've done it before, this is a big job, it's not gonna happen overnight, but I'm encouraged, Rebecca called, and, you know, some of the neighbors are here.
Yep.
It's, it's gonna be a long job, it's not a instant thing, but, um...
Yeah, I mean, diff- to me, difficult doesn't seem impossible, um, and I think it's a matter of really tight communication with all the folks on Central Street, and maybe there are some conversations about, um, privately funding the removal of some of the major trees and rocks that are barriers. I know on Facebook, um, there was more than fifty folks that responded that said that they would pay to have all of their trees removed if it meant getting a sidewalk. There are probably more than one hundred children on Central Street that would then have safe walking access to Vixeter River Park, three of the major school systems, the library, the center of town. Um, statistically, streets that show that they're walkable, um, are more safe, are more, um, it increases real estate value, which would then increase taxes, which would then increase revenue. Um, so again, I think there's.
You've been listening.
I'm sorry?
You've been listening.
I applaud all of you for volunteering, you know, a lot of you.
Yeah, we have vacancies in all boards, committees, commissions, finance committee, and if you're available.
Um, you know, I, yeah, agreed, it's certainly not something that's gonna happen overnight, but, you know, I wanted to be here to raise the conversation, to at least put it on the agenda, and I'm willing and available to have conversations separately to see what it takes to at least start the conversations to make this happen.
Well, one, one clear step would be to find a way of organizing the community, and, uh, I mean, community.
Central Street.
Yeah, sure.
And, uh, see, we've run into issues where we, we think we have, you know, a consensus of doing something, and next thing, you know, out of the woodwork come the people that don't want it done.
Sure, and I'm, I'm sure that would be the case here as well.
So that would be helpful if.
Yeah, I mean, I think the next step would be to determine what some of those major barriers are, where some of those costs are, and then, you know, coming up with a plan to approach some of those homeowners separately and seeing what an estimate would look like and how much we could shave off of the budget by doing that, literally, house by house. And I'm, I'm willing to do that, and I know there are other folks on Central Street that are willing to volunteer their time to, to, to see what we could do to make that happen.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Yule.
What is the Facebook page that?
Um, it's Parents of North Reading.
Parents of.
Town of, Town of North Reading Parents Connection. There's, I think as of today, there's almost eight hundred members. Everything from, we've seen a Fisher cat on Haverhill Street to, um, anybody know of a good handyman, to, I wanna sign up for a Parks and Rec class, I know it's full, does anybody else wanna sign up so we can get another class funded? That actually just happened last week, as a matter of fact, and we were able to get another class funded because we were able to get the community together on Facebook and know that there are enough people that would be willing to sign up their kids.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Shall we, uh, start with, uh, going through the warrant articles?
Sure.
Where's the warrant articles under?
Hmm?
Where are the articles under? And then on the W?
Mr. Chairman, I put together a PowerPoint presentation, first draft PowerPoint presentation to guide our discussion for this evening, and I'll take you through the articles. Um, I've left blanked the areas for assigning the articles, um, we can either do that tonight as we go through it, or do that at the next meeting of the audit.
I'll take them all.
Yeah.
Probably advisable to wait for.
I would wait for it.
We have a change in the board coming.
Okay.
And it's not something we need to do tonight.
Uh, so the first article is fiscal year twenty fifteen budget amendment, um, at the moment, I look to the Finance Director and to see that nothing's changed in the past three hours, but, um, no identified budget amendment, uh, action at this point in time, but we'll continue to monitor this as we lead up to the town meeting, and we'll leave it on the warrant. Article two, the snow and ice deficit, um, again, we'll be utilizing a combination of funding sources to resolve our projected deficit of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and the balance of the deficit at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been plugged into the FY twenty sixteen, uh, revenue plan.
So that eight seventy, right, does not include the one twen- the one seventy-five or the two fifty?
Correct.
So that's the, in addition to?
In addition to what we spent already, what we project to carry over into fiscal year twenty sixteen, the Finance Director's going to correct me, it looks like.
The eight hundred and seventy thousand is the current snow and ice deficit as of right now, so it is after the operating budget, but it does not include the reserve that we have on the revenue plan.
Okay, right.
And free cash and the overlay surplus, that's why it lists and snow removal reserve, so.
The amount that we have to raise of the eight seven is eight seventy minus the two fifty.
Correct.
Even though we have to raise the two fifty.
The, the two fifty is part of the revenue plan already, so it's set aside, and then we have free cash set aside as well as a release of overlay surplus.
So it's, it's covered.
Yeah.
To be clear, we spent for snow and ice removal for this past season, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, plus two hundred fifty thousand dollars, plus this number? No, okay, thank you.
This one seventy-five plus that number.
Got it, thank you.
I hope.
Yes, it, it's, this is the actual deficit on the books, so you have your budgeted amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then you have your actual spent, and then you have your actual deficit, and the actual deficit on the books right now is approximately eight hundred and seventy thousand. Then we already have two hundred and fifty thousand set aside to offset the eight hundred and seventy thousand, then we need six hundred and twenty thousand.
So this is not the number to be spent, I understand, thank you.
So we need to get six twenty covered.
Six twenty.
Right.
And, and, you know, keep in mind that this number fluctuates, um, whether it's for a meal ticket or a mailbox, or it could even go down with purchase orders. Right, right, so, I mean, we could close purchase orders and this number could go down, we could also receive, you know, we have up until June thirtieth to receive meal tickets as well as any mailbox reimbursements, so it is a changing number, um, you may have to vote it the night of town meeting.
Okay, bud.
Okay.
This funding source is available to, to cover the deficit.
Thank you.
Do you want a recommendation as we go along, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay, so Article One.
Oh, Article One, we can't recommend it.
Nothing to recommend at that point, Article Two. We're gonna recommend it, right? Move to recommend, whatever the number's gonna be.
The number may change slightly.
But the number may change, but whatever the number is, we're gonna recommend it and.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Frisco.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One absent.
Someone keeping tally?
Yes.
Yes.
We are taking, keeping, keeping tally.
Article three.
Transfer of funds for the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, uh, the fund balance today is seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars. The article proposes to add five hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars from free cash, five hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred eighty-four, which will then, um, fund the operating budget for fiscal year twenty sixteen.
And a big part of that is the snow and ice. No?
No, um, this will offset the debt service budget, so, um, you know, we do this every year, um, it doesn't have anything to do with snow and ice.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Frisco, all in favor?
Aye.
Folks, unanimous? Article four.
It's a transfer of funds to the Water Stabilization Fund, the number identified by the Department of Public Works for water retained earnings is a hundred eight thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars to be transferred in.
That's hot and fast, right? Let's let you have a change.
We're not projecting any change at this point.
Yes, move to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
For clarification, Mr. Chairman, pardon me, for clarification, the Finance Director, this, uh, does not factor in one way or the other with regard to potential issue regarding fiscal year twenty fourteen, uh, water, the last two months, is that correct?
This is certified retained earnings as of seven one fourteen, it would have no.
Okay, thank you. Article five, a transfer of funds to the Stabilization Fund.
So we're gonna withhold, withhold recommendation?
Recommendation at town meeting.
Right.
Recommendation at town, does the board wish to vote to make a recommendation at town meeting, or?
We'll vote, we'll make a recommendation at town meeting.
Make a recommendation at town meeting, I don't think, uh, it may be a passover, but.
Thank you.
Article six.
Appropriate funds for the overlay deficit, anticipate this to be passed over, there's no known deficit at this point in time.
But again, recommendation to be made at town meeting.
Thank you. Article seven, the selection of town officers, routine, authorizes the board to select when to choose town officers, recommendation would be to recommend.
Yep, move to recommend.
Do we have a motion?
Yep, so move. Second.
Second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article eight.
Here in acting reports to the town officers and committees, again, a routine article, action would be to recommend.
Move to recommend. Second.
Second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Okay.
Article nine, Mr. O'Leary?
Well, hold on a second, what are, these articles are out of here, I don't know, please, these motions that we have, but Article six, then Article twelve, rest of the routine, eh, okay, I'm sorry. Article nine, other than the motions in front of us, yeah, they're not all here, they're not all here, that's all.
Yeah, I know, but for some reason, we, I, we didn't bring them in.
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay.
I saw them, but.
Yep, okay, move to recommend Article nine.
Second, do it here.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Yes, routine to DPW, to Director, Director to be able to accept easements. Compensating balance agreements, again, routine, recommendation would be to recommend.
Yeah, move to recommend. Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article eleven, to authorize chapter ninety construction, I would note, I appreciate the work of the Finance Director to come up with language with our auditor, I believe, that would, uh, in the event that additional funding is made available by the state administration subsequent to the town meeting, it wouldn't prohibit us from expending that funding. We have been notified by the Commonwealth to expect to receive five hundred nine thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars in fiscal year twenty sixteen, but in the event that additional funding becomes available, we would not need to return a town meeting to authorize it, which is the situation that we are in this current fiscal year with regard to approximately two hundred thousand dollars made available in January. The recommendation would be to recommend.
Yeah, move to recommend. Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article twelve, the prior year bills, we do have two known bills, uh, there's a, they do total under a hundred dollars, is that correct?
Yeah.
Recommendation to be made at town meeting, please do so more.
Article thirteen, fiscal year twenty sixteen, uh, town operating budget, I believe we said we'd take action in the next week's meeting on that, same for Article fourteen as well, action will be taken next week, if you could just. Correct, yes. Article fifteen, fund retirement obligations, the amount is a hundred thousand dollars, and the funding source would be through raise and appropriate, and this is something that has been identified and accounted for in the financial planning team's revenue plan for fiscal year twenty sixteen, the recommendation would be to recommend.
Move to recommend. Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article sixteen, transfer of funds to the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund, again, there's any funds that are projected to remain in the FY fifteen solid waste budget, uh, being transferred into the stabilization fund, will identify the dollar amount immediately prior to town meeting, and would recommend action at town meeting.
Recommendation at town meeting.
Article seventeen, the transfer of funds to other post-employment benefits, present balance today is a hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred five dollars, proposed. Proposed transfer in the amount of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from raise and appropriate. Again, as has been referenced, this represents approximately fifty percent of the required deposits for new hire employees with our intention to phase in, phase it into a hundred percent over the next few years for all new hire employees. Recommendation would be to recommend.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article eighteen, is a reappropriation of borrowing proceeds associated with a DPW truck. Was factored into the capital improvement plan that was presented earlier this evening, and the recommendation would be to recommend.
Move to recommend.
Second.
What's the recommendation?
To recommend. This.
Oh, yes, it's the reappropriation, yes, okay. All, motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, fully. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Frisco's got a question?
So, what is this money for again?
So, this is, as the finance director explained, she probably can do a better job than I.
From that article, for the capital to.
What article?
Could you explain?
Sure. So, as Don had presented at the beginning of the meeting, one of the items, and I believe it's the school special ed ban, will be funded with partially this twenty-nine thousand four eighty-four. Then, the remaining piece will be funded by raise and appropriate or free cash, one of, you know, one of the two. It will be outlined on the capital article for next Monday night for you, for your vote.
All right, so.
With all the sources of funds.
So, one thing administratively, Michael, we need to do. Is this article should come up before the capital article?
Okay. We can move it to.
I mean, we, here we are, we're putting money in a different place.
Right.
I would think that you'd want it before the capital article.
Okay.
In fact, this should be in the, this should be in the two thousand and fifteen budget part of town meeting. It should be up in the front.
It's capital, I wouldn't.
You're transferring, oh, it's available money.
I would just do the reappropriations of bond proceeds prior to the capital article.
But it should be, I think it should be before the capital. Otherwise, you're saying, you're voting to do something and you don't know if that item's gonna pass or not. So, that article should be passed first.
Understood.
Article.
Do you got a vote on it?
Okay.
Call for vote.
You mo, uh.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Oh, did you second?
Yep.
I didn't hear the motion.
Opposed?
Yep.
Unanimous?
Yes, I did.
You seconded it.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule.
Yeah. Unanimous.
Sorry. Article nineteen.
Similar to Article eighteen, we'll move it to before the capital plan, earlier in the town meeting, article warrant. And it's a reappropriation of borrowing proceeds associated with the Martins Pond flood mitigation. Again, we will alter that number based on the previous discussion to reflect the full amount available of a hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Are we reallocating it? Oh, just from the one twelve, we'll go to the one thirty-four, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Just renumber it. Motion?
Yep, move to recommend.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article twenty, this would be to fund the Martins Pond milfoil treatment. And again, the number will be the fifty-six thousand dollar number that was discussed earlier. And I looked to the finance director, but that would be from raise and appropriate. Is that correct? For the proposed milfoil treatment program.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article twenty-one, this would fund the Route twenty-eight corridor study. Be twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash, which has been carried as a budgeted item since February thirteenth, Town Administrator's Budget Recommendation came forward. Again, it would consist of recommended zoning changes to best support commercial development, a build-out analysis of areas along the corridor that could support new growth, and a market analysis of the types of retail, office, housing, and other uses that could thrive there. The analysis would go beyond the scope of the last study of Route twenty-eight, which was done in nineteen ninety-six and which resulted in design standards codified in the Town Site Plan Review Regulation. That plan was focused chiefly on the aesthetic issues along the corridor, but did not include a discussion of market conditions or build-out analysis, which this plan would do.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, just thinking about this, we are kind of stretching and holding out hope that this will get funded by the Metropolitan Regional Planning Organization. Does not look good, but I just want to state that upfront. I don't know if the board wants to withhold this action until we get closer to the town meeting. Again, it does not look good that it will get funded. Recommend that we.
I'm in favor.
If we get the money, that's great.
Okay.
On record as far as doing it, by the way.
Article twenty-two, funded interpretive display of Native American artifacts at twenty-five thousand dollars. There is no funding source identified at this, and my understanding is that the Historical Commission or the Historic District Commission is meeting this evening to discuss this item, so I'd recommend we hold off and act until we hear from them. Article twenty-three, amend code, the general bylaws, junk vehicles and other waste material. I don't know if the board members had an opportunity to review the warrant article language that was in the draft warrant, but this is essentially taking the existing junk bylaw that we have, chapter one fifty-two of the general bylaws, and revising it to place the enforcement of the property-related violations within the Health Department, which presumably would occur through the Health Director with a possibility for consideration for appeal or hearing under the Board of Health. Presently, the junk bylaw identifies that the enforcing authority is the Board of Selectmen. This is an item that was identified when a resident complaint came up in the fall. It's my opinion that the matter is better handled through a regulatory inspectional group in department in the Board of Health, which is why I've made the recommendation for the change. Hi, this is just a very quick summary. There is also a change with regard to the fines, to identify that the fines would serve on a, be accumulated on a per day basis. It's not specifically identified in that way, if that were to be the case as well. But again, the intention here is to clear up the bylaw a bit and make it a little more practical to enforce it. There is a section of it that is under the jurisdiction of the Police Department, and that would continue to be the case, and that's with regard to unregistered vehicles. But I've spoken with the chief, and again, that authority is already in place under state law as well.
Mr. Frisco.
So, this vote, this is all properties?
It's correct, yes. Private property.
Commercial, residential.
Yes, my understanding is that that section of the bylaw does not restrict its applicability.
I would suggest that we hold off on voting on it until we have a chance to review all the language.
Okay.
Article twenty-four.
Sidewalks, no removal. There's been a significant amount of discussion here at the board level as well as with the police and fire, police and public works department relative to existing bylaw and how it would contribute to the clearing of snow for pedestrian routes. I believe that we have a good concept to be vetted with the community, but I'm concerned that there just may not be enough time to vet that concept before the June town meeting, and would suggest that we hold on acting on this until the October town meeting and bring the matter up under a separate agenda item with the Board of Selectmen for discussion over the course of the spring and summer.
So, you're recommending that we remove it from the warrant?
I think that that would probably be the best way to.
We just signed the warrant, so it's too late.
I think we should, I think we should leave it on there in just the town meeting. Again, it just heightens people's awareness again that it's gonna come up in October. So, we're gonna move to.
We can't remove it anywhere, we just signed the warrant.
Recommend.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that was the election warrant.
I just move to recommend passing over.
Yeah.
We, leave it on there.
Okay.
Recommend passing it over, it gives us an opportunity to talk about it one more time.
Right.
You know, in public venue.
So, you're making a motion to pass over?
I may, to support.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article twenty-five, amend code, I'd like to ask Representative of the Youth Services Committee to present this, unless Mr. Ford, you'd like to, because I know there's a couple of changes that they propose to make. So, I'd like to ask to come next week to do it. I think that that would be the best bet.
Okay. Next.
Article twenty-six to the thirty-five, my apologies, but time ran out and I wasn't able to get the list of the revolving funds in here, but we do have them in the blueprinted warrant, so we could go through them to recommend if we'd like. I'm presuming that the recommendation would be.
Mr. O'Leary, you wanna make a recommendation on the whole lot?
No, well, first of all, first of all, in twenty-five, what did we do here? This was on the Youth Services, what are we gonna do?
They're gonna come on Monday.
They have them come next week.
So, we're waiting. Just gonna wait. So, there's only one. There's only one.
Well, you get the fingerprint. What's the rest of them?
There's only one. You're adding the class two automobile license. That's it. That's all that's being requested.
That's correct.
So, there's no other list.
Perhaps my presentation is skipping that article.
Yeah, you gotta go to twenty-six. You already did twenty-five.
He did twenty-five.
Yeah, he doesn't.
Okay, so twenty-six, twenty-six is the general bylaws, fingerprinting of applicants.
Okay. Nope, that's an error for.
No problem.
That's okay. And that one there is just to add?
Class two licenses.
Class two automobile license.
That's correct.
Did we need to, did we have some discussion as to the need to do this annually or whatever the timeframe was going to be? And we're gonna take a look at that?
It was an item that won, well, I shouldn't say won, there were at least a couple in the license renewal process with regard to the need to pay a fee to the town to have their fingerprints reviewed each year, because the bylaw for those licenses that are covered requires an annual renewal, and an annual review conference.
They were, the town has to pay and the state collects most of the money on them.
It's federal government.
Oh, whoever it is.
Right. It's a renewal checking the federal database.
So, I can review with the chief perhaps some alterations to try to lessen the impact on the businesses for that and come back with the recommendation?
Yes, if there's something, I don't know what everybody else's feelings are, but, I mean, I know we need to keep it up to date and if there's a new employee or someone else that needs to, you know, to come in upon.
Well, there was a couple of issues. One was related to actually taking the fingerprints and then filing them again, and the fee.
Yeah, the fees, right. Oh, I know.
So, there's a portion of the fee that you have to pay each time. And then, there's the town portion. And then, there was some talk about waiving the town portion.
That's correct, yes.
Right. I think they just pay.
That was miniscule, though.
Yeah, it's miniscule, but I think this is thirty-five dollars. Is what they have to pay to get their fingerprints done.
I'll consult with the police chief with regard to his recommendation for whether, maybe there's a different interval of time that they could be kept on file for that would address this.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if there's some sort of relief we can give some people. I know it's difficult, cherry picking who has to and who doesn't.
Maybe the next meeting. We'll wait on it for now. Now, the revolving counts are twenty-seven through thirty-five.
My apologies for the error.
Are they thirty-five? I don't know.
I got it right here, yeah.
No, actually.
Nope, thirty-five.
So, twenty-seven to thirty-five, Mr. O'Leary.
Move to recommend Articles twenty-seven through thirty-five.
Mr. Yule.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Article thirty-six, which is the street acceptance associated with the high school driveway. This would be to accept a portion of the high school driveway as a public way from Park Street to the rear lot line of the corner property of Park Street and the existing driveway. That's a public way, I don't have the number in front of me, I apologize. This action would close out land transactions associated with the intersection improvements at Park Street associated with the middle and high school project. The board is scheduled to have its first vote on the intention to lay out the way this coming Monday, the fourth, and then to have the actual public hearing on the eighteenth of May. It has been laid out and drawn by the consulting engineer involved, and we believe that this is the appropriate way to remedy the situation at this point in time. Again, I know I've said it in public settings in the past, but accepting this road would not grant to, we've had it reviewed by the CPC, Town Planner, and the Building Inspector, and the acceptance of this road as a driveway would not give any other development rights that the property owner at that location does not already have at that location.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Just, I just started a comment, I want to thank everybody's effort forth here, particularly the town administrator, town engineer, who else? Whole lot of other people.
We have Town Planner, Building Inspector.
Building Inspector, anybody else that was involved to get this thing done.
Making it happen.
Making it happen.
So, all in favor?
Nice job.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Article thirty-seven, to citizens petition to rezone parcels on Pluff Avenue and Fairway Road, and this would rezone sixteen parcels from highway business to Residence A. CPC held its hearing on the zoning bylaw change last Tuesday evening, but to my knowledge, has not yet made a recommendation with regard to its position on this particular order.
We'd have to wait for a CPC recommendation.
Yeah, I did attend the meeting. I learned a lot.
What'd you learn?
Well, my opinion is that I think the people that are, the business owner at two ninety-nine Main Street kind of went about it all wrong. And I think if he tried to work with his neighbors. I also think we have a zoning issue over there potentially, because I'm not sure how, if you, you know, I am, from an economic development standpoint, I don't like giving up commercial property. I think it's a bad idea. But when you go and look at that tent that was put up over there, and it doesn't make sense to me. It's right up against the road, and it's a massive tent. It just doesn't look good. I don't think that's what our zoning really won, wants in this town, but I don't know. I'd ask, I asked the CPC to come back, but at least to find out if that's a legitimate tent. But the deal is they're trying to purchase the property that abuts them. It's a residential home, and they want to expand their business. Because if you go over there and look now, you know, they're trying to run this business on a postage stamp. And, and it's, and it does overflow into the road. I did go over there the night of, the night before the meeting or the day of the meeting, and I did witness some equipment in the middle of the road legitimately. There was a compressor on the road, I witnessed it myself. The owner did admit at that time. But it did get very heated at that meeting. I'm sure you're gonna read about it in the transcript. The only thing I was very disappointed in was when a resident asked in a very polite way, what you're gonna do with the home, the owner said that he'll do whatever he wants, and right now, he's considering an adult entertainment, so you can see. It's, it's, this isn't, this isn't good. Okay, and we have an article up here that just could get so ugly on town meeting floor, and I would urge the property owner of the business now to meet, just meet with the residents Okay, and we have an article up here that just could get so ugly on town meeting floor, and I would urge the property owner of the business now to meet, just meet with the residents and see if you could just resolve the issues, and then I hope they pass over this article. Because I really think if they work together and they're all good neighbors, I think it could all work over there. But I think us as a town should look at the zoning over there, or maybe Steve, you could look into it because if you, have you seen it?
Oh, yeah.
I just, this doesn't make sense to me, I don't know how.
It's unsightly, yeah, it's unsightly and.
I don't think we would have approved that.
Uh, those, those temporary garages or whatever they're called, you know, the, uh, maybe they look like a tent.
I don't know what you call it.
But they're not, they're not a structure, they're a temporary structure. So they, I don't know if there's a glitch in the zoning bylaws as far as these temporary structures.
And they, when there's a delivery.
They would have the opinion, because it's been an issue often on over here, but, but that is extremely unsightly and inconsiderate and.
And I don't, I don't want to take anyone from this business owner, they have to run their business, but they also use the street as their loading and unloading. I mean, it's a, it's a street, and people have to live on that street. There is no place in their lot for them to do loading, unloading. They legitimately dump sand in the middle of the road, and then they use a front-end loader to move it onto the site. I just don't know if that's the appropriate way things will work, and I think, again, going back, the business owner needs to work with the residents and make this go away. Because right now, if it came for me, I'm not in favor of giving away commercial land, but in this case, I would probably vote in favor of it just because I just don't think that's the best setup for the town going forward.
That's kind of snob zoning, though, I think.
If you go, if you want to open, your, your business is next door and you've invested millions of dollars.
No, 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 I understand.
You see this, it just doesn't fit.
Changing the zoning doesn't necessarily, there's gonna be a better way.
No, this isn't the solution.
No, it's a situation where the business quickly outgrew.
Oh, yeah.
It may have been, it may have outgrown the, the spot before they even get in there, but it quickly outgrew it. And they're utilizing the right-of-way and they're not making it, it's making it rather unsightly, too, for the, for the neighbors and the neighborhoods.
Dangerous.
You know, so it's, uh, well, you know, I think we, so I think we have an enforcement issue in relation to, you know, Building Inspector and Police Department as far as the use of the right-of-way. That's the first thing that needs to be addressed, which helps clean up the situation, and then maybe a little bit more, a little more diplomacy on the part of the owner, property owner might help, but it may be too late.
Bring in adult entertainment, that's what they intend to do then.
There's an adult entertainment zone.
The zone is out on Cocker Street, by the way. You can't, you can't put it there if he wants to do it.
I'm just saying what was stated.
He might, he might want to, instead of, you know, putting it out in Cocker Street, he should put his own, his other business out there. But obviously, the, the site isn't suitable for what.
Unhappy homeowners.
Well, it's also the site is being overutilized.
Big time.
For the purpose that the businessman has, so it just doesn't work. And I know he's been negotiating with the adjacent parcel to try and purchase it.
I think he has a purchase and sale.
Right. So it's, uh, I think from an enforcement standpoint. But again, wait for a recommendation on the CPC and the petitioners, right? We haven't heard from the petitioners.
Do we have a, are we having a hearing for that?
I thought that was, uh, this is our hearing.
No, the, the hearing in the warrant article is May eighteenth.
May eighteenth, okay.
We all set?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, Michael, for putting that together.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, the next item that would be on here is a vehicle use policy, and I, I regret to state that I noted that the town council's comments identified that there were a couple of modifications that needed to be made that were not made. So I'd like to ask to pass this over to next Monday night.
Okay.
There's a lot of red on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All good, though.
Oh, it was all great comments, but.
Yeah.
There were three questions that weren't answered.
We have covered everything in our agenda except for old and new business, unless you have anything else to add.
No, sir.
Mr. O'Leary, you want to start?
No, I just, just like a comment on the passing of Paul Buddy Woods, who was a long-time, almost lifelong resident of, of North Reading. A true participant in the activities in the town, not necessarily in the boards, committees, and commissions, but there wasn't too many people who didn't know Buddy. And passing is extremely untimely, and I can offer my condolences to his family, and mention my appreciation for his participation, advice, and humor over the years. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Fode?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
You're saving everything for Monday night, right?
Exactly.
Mr. Frisco?
Yeah, since our last meeting, we had the Ed's, Ed's Sat, I'm not sure, so you were there?
No, I, I couldn't make it.
That was on April tenth, it was really good. The Ed's Sat, that was the Duca, Duca Center came in and gave an overview of that, the Ed's Sat. I was asked, I was asked the town administrator, I'm sorry, when you have a second?
Copy says we're.
Apologies.
Did, did the Ed's Sat report that was presented to us on April tenth uploaded into Dropbox for our board members to look at?
Yes, it was uploaded upon receipt, I believe, actually.
Yeah, we had that, we got that a while ago.
No, no, the final, the final report, the summary that was presented on April tenth?
Did we get that?
No, I think we got, I think we got something before that.
You did, you received the raw results.
Yeah.
He put it into a summary and recommendations, which I think would be.
I, I did not upload them, I need to check with Karen to see whether she did or not. If she didn't, we will.
I think it would be useful to present that.
To get that out to the board.
It's only a few slides, we presented at a future board of select meeting when things settle down. But I think it's a lot of great information, at least in the meantime, the board members will have an opportunity to look at that, I think.
Yeah, I read the other report, I was, you know.
Yeah, it's free, but now he summarized it, and he did a great job. Just a little quick update on the EDC. We have met three times. We have been in the process of interviewing brokers. We are, Bob, myself, I'm sorry, Michael, myself, and Danielle have been going back and forth with the state on the LDA, which is the purchase and sale. Just drafts and getting that going, so things are moving along. We're hoping to see the, be here in front of the board before town meeting to just give you an update on the actions that we took, which is presenting a broker, the appraiser, and a market study. And hopefully, again, have that here for you for your consideration before during town meeting. And then really, just, I, I, I'm just kind of blown away, I guess I was in a shell or something. I've been seeing in the last couple of days all the rioting going on in Baltimore, Maryland, my prayers go out to all them, I, I just can't believe it. I love, I love it, I love that area, I've been down there many times with my family, and to see the rioting, it really hits home because it could happen here, and, and I, and I really feel bad for what's going on. I know the national god has now brought, been brought in, it's, I guess, the sign of the times we live in, but my, my prayers go out to all those families in Maryland, Baltimore area.
Is that it, Michael?
That's all.
Okay. I, I received a call from Zelma Greenstein. She's a member of the garden club, and they're planning to put a veterans memorial at Ipsa-Triver Park on May thirtieth. At four P.M. Kind of an odd time, but evidently the park was tied up in between. And she's asked, uh, one, for us to, uh, make a proclamation, she's gonna send me some information associated with that, I'll get it to Karen to put together. And then I guess she's looking for some board members to show up and maybe say a few words. I put it in my calendar, I'm letting everybody else know that everybody's invited. So that's on May thirtieth, that's not Memorial Day, Memorial Day, I guess, is early, it's after.
It's the Saturday following.
It's Saturday afternoon at four P.M.
It's at IRP, did you say?
Kind of odd time, but.
Excuse me, Bob, did you say IRP?
What?
At IRP?
Yes.
Yes. I'm not exactly sure where.
It's the, who the walking?
The garden club has some kind of a, uh, some area that they're maintaining there, and it's gonna be over there, but I don't know where it is.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's the walkway going down towards the, the river, kind of, if you're coming in the main walkway entrance where the gate is, you kind of bear left.
Down to the river, past the gazebo?
That's my understanding, yeah.
I want this thing near me in the wintertime.
My face is hot.
Fill the table, right?
I know, you can feel my face, it's burning up.
And that's all that I have. Yes, Mr. Yule?
Yeah, I, I didn't get a chance to.
Did I skip over you?
No, he wasn't here, he wasn't here, he didn't want to hear Steve talk.
You snooze, you lose. Yes, Mr. Yule, sorry.
Yeah, just, just a, a few quick things. First of all, just, just a reminder, the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline is, you know, their mission is to gather knowledge and gather information, they've been doing that, they did that today. We're getting into, getting, you know, things are coming down the line here, things are getting close, and, uh, the scoping meetings are coming upon us, okay? And that'll probably occur sometime in June, is that what the, the feedback we had? They still have to finish all of their, um, presentations, whatever you want to call them, I think they have two that are outstanding.
Yeah, two open houses.
Right, okay.
Not in this area.
Right, now, you know, I, if any, just for your information, is that the purpose of the, of the scoping of the meetings is that the process is to gather input from agencies, land over, land owners, and other interested, interested stakeholders. That's where the intervening process comes in, where our board can become an intervenor, and we can individually be intervenors, or businesses, or groups, or whatever, so that's, that's the process there.
And it's when?
Uh, that, that, it's, it's not, in June, possibly somewhere. They, they haven't, uh, done a, uh, they haven't made the initial, uh, I can't think of the right word, acceptance of, of the pipeline yet, they haven't done that yet.
Who they?
They, FERC, FERC. This is all, all will be done through FERC. Another thing is the letter that we wrote to Kinder Morgan, one of the other towns is using our example to, our letter that we sent to Kinder Morgan as an example, for, for them to use, and, and to address it, the issues that they had with FERC. So that, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I don't know if anybody has any quick questions on that.
What's the response been from United States Senators and the Congressmen affected?
Well, um, I, uh, I haven't, I haven't, well, there has been some feedback or inquiries to, um, Senator, I mean Congressman, what's that?
Maltin.
Maltin, yes.
You can say that, even as a Democrat. You know, knowing the Democrats, it's difficult for you.
I couldn't, I couldn't think of it, actually. So, uh, but I think.
Raced it from his mind.
His, they, there seems to be some support from, from him, but nothing's concrete, they're looking into it further.
Support which way?
Uh, in, in, in opposing the pipeline.
Oh, okay.
Right, right, in support of the, the activity by the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline is what I mean. So, and, um, I think back, Elizabeth Warren, I think is against it anyway, right, I think she said, and I think Mark is against it as well. I believe there is a meeting, and I'm, I'm hoping I can attend this meeting, but I believe there is a meeting coming up with Senator Tar on Article ninety-seven, that's the big issue at, at the moment. The Article ninety-seven, if you will recall, has to do with the, Article ninety-seven of the Massachusetts Constitution, having to do with, um, where did I put it? I made a bunch of copies of it, too. There were bad copies, too. Having to do with the environmental, um, protection of environmental lands, and there's a, I don't know, is it in bill form, did they say? That there's a, to waive the state's right to stop the federal government from allowing the pipeline to.
Right now, as the state, the legislature has to give it its blessing, if not, what they're looking to do is have that bypassed.
Right, 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 they're looking to bypass, bypass, thank you, that's the better wording of it, bypass Article ninety-seven.
Just one question, May fourth, you said Kinder Morgan is coming in here?
Uh, yes, that's what we understand.
At our meeting.
I, I am a little concerned about that, only because how much time have you been on for us to have that discussion in particular?
I, I'd like to make a suggestion, and partially from my own not confirming availability of legislators, I think we may want to consider pushing that out to the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Because then we can notify people, gives them time to plan and assign staff.
How about Joe here? I'll be, I'll come.
Can we put an honorary receipt right here?
Maybe even at town meeting, I mean, we just have a lot of things we, we gotta kind of tie together before town meeting. I don't want, but I don't want to send a message to the residents that we don't care, but.
Well, I, to your point.
It's, I don't want people to come in here and we have to give them a time limit, we hold them to it, and then we have to move on to the next business. I don't believe it's the chairman and the town administrator worked that out, but I'm just one to voice my concerns that I think.
I don't have a problem moving in.
May fourth is probably not the appropriate night.
I don't know, you've got them scheduled, though, right?
They're available, and, and, I mean, the dynamic has changed now, they, they want to be in front of us because we've told them no.
And I'm okay with it, but I think we have to set a time, and we have to stick to it.
I, I think that in the interest of the.
Go on all night long?
In the interest of the hearing, not, not the hearings, but the discussions that'll probably take place next week, we may want to allocate it to the eighteen.
All right, let's, let's do that. And also give an opportunity to put in the paper that they're coming.
And Joe?
We can plan accordingly.
All right, so we can continue on, get out of here.
Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I mentioned to you, Bob, that I would bring this up because I just had a question about it, and, and, and I think the public would like to know, there was an article in the, uh, The Globe, April seventh, with regard to town, it involved Tewksbury about the police department's data being held hostage. And, um, there's this thing going around that people, uh, public computers can be accessed.
Police, yeah, police, it's happened in different police files.
Right, so, so, uh, so my question, you know, you know, how well are we protected against that? You know, we said so, it's just a question that I.
Well, talking to the chief about it, he sent one of his officers over to help them scramble the mess. Basically, I've been dealing with it now for the past two months, that, you know, clients are getting it, and we've found ways of, of blocking it, and then they come around. We had one client that got it a week ago, and two days, I cleaned it all out, and by the way, the way, the safest thing for anybody to do is have a good, good backups, right? Because all that they're doing is encrypting your data.
Right.
So generally, what happens is it gets on a workstation, and most workstations have map drives to their servers, in other words, locations where they store their data, and it'll go from the computer to a map drive, and, you know, it'll get in, get on the server, and then everybody, when they go to look at their data, it's, they can't open it, it's all encrypted. So the solution is, well, one is you find the, the source of where it got on, and you, you clean it out, and then you take your backup and you restore all those files. You basically delete the encrypted files and put the restored files back on the system.
So we, we're pretty okay, Mr. Maltin?
So the, the first level of protect, uh, protection is to have a good backup. The next thing is that, uh, there are firewalls, and there are business-class firewalls, and there are services that you can buy related to the firewalls that are constantly updating things. And there are configurations and setting that, you know, tighten that, that hole that everybody has in their network to make it small enough so that they, they can't find you. But I, I recently updated a firewall on one customer that got this, and I went back and checked the logs later, and it seemed like, and, and it was a Comcast network, and it affected two businesses in the same building, they come in on that same pipe. And when I look at the router, you can see all the attacks that were being blocked, and it was going on from two to four in the afternoon, the following day, the same thing. So, you know, there's, they're out there and they're constantly hammering at everybody.
So is, are, are, we're okay with our, and, uh, here in North Reading?
I, I can't answer that a hundred percent, but I know that Gene has been pretty meticulous about the security.
I know he has, okay.
And I know, by the way, I know that he has backups of everything.
Right, okay, okay, okay. Now, also, I just want to recognize Jonathan and Laura Gueva, that apparently they started Gloomstday.com, they live here in North Reading, they started this business, and apparently it was, it's taking off for them, and there was, again, there was an article in The Globe on that. Also, James V.C., uh, at Harvard, he's a leading scorer there, I want to congratulate him, he's doing very well, another native, lives down the block from me. Also, did anybody see the painting by Pauline Hall in the paper today? It's beautiful, when you see it, it, it's really, it's of, uh, the, the Clay Memorial Library, it's really a beautiful, beautiful, they call it.
Globe?
I'm sorry?
Globe?
No, 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 in the transcript.
Oh, today?
Yeah, the transcript today, yeah, yeah.
It's last Thursday.
Thursday's.
Oh, Thursday, okay.
Last Thursday.
I'm losing track of the days, okay. It must be getting late, okay. Let me just finish by saying that the election is one week and a day from today, and, uh.
Or a week from tomorrow.
Tomorrow, no, well, from today, today's month, today's.
Or a week from tomorrow. Please, please, please.
It's getting late, guys.
Who's counting, Joe?
Okay, the, the transcript will have candidates' input. We didn't have, unfortunately, a debate night, that didn't happen this, this time, so I urge everybody to read the transcripts, get to know who the candidates are. For the CPC, you have two write-in candidates, Joe Vino and Mark DeSimone, and, um, for the school, you have John Barrett is a, is a write-in with the, and he's a new candidate, and Julie Kepke, she's an official candidate, and a, and a new candidate as well, and Jerry Benetzi is the incumbent. If you have children in the school system, this is an important election, this election may determine how your children are educated. Read the transcript twice over and what the candidates have to say. Become informed, then vote, one week and a day from today. Become informed, then vote one week and a day from today.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Senator Michael Frisco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?